All right, we'll call the order. The Town of Gilbert Planning Commission Regular Meeting. First item is roll call.
Chairman Brian Anderson.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner Seth Vanda.
I'm here.
Commissioner David Caveney. Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Les Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Daniel Sepuentes.
Did Caveney hang up? Okay, thank you. Next is approval of agenda. It's been recommended during when we close the study session that we shift some things around. Some are recommended that we move items fifteen and sixteen, GP eighteen oh six Taraza, Z eighteen oh nine Taraza, and items twenty and twenty-one, GPA thirteen thirteen, GPA thirteen, eighteen thirteen residences at Santan Village and Z eighteen dash twenty-seven residents at Santan Village from non-consent to consent calendar. And we're going to move item swap items nineteen with item twenty-two. Vice Chair, can I get a motion on the approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as you've just outlined it.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Agenda is approved. Next is item ten, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within jurisdictions in the town but not on the agenda. Commission Board response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is anybody from the public wish to address the commission at this time? Not seeing any? Move along to public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of the commission board for further discussion action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Does anybody need to state any conflicts with the consent calendar?
Yes, I have a conflict with item number thirteen.
Okay, so we will do this in two motions. Vice Chair, do you know what the motions are? Or do you want me to go through them?
Chairman, I do.
Okay.
We're going to go first with the easy one. Item number thirteen, Gilbert Regional Park. I move that we approve item number thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johns. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Chairman, I move that we approve the the public hearing consent calendar. Items number eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty, and twenty-one, as shown on the agenda.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Who's that? Commissioner Vanda for a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries? Now we'll move along to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at individual public hearing and will be acted upon by commission board by separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number in which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission board. First item is item seventeen, GP eighteen oh eight Gabriella Point Commerce Center. Ashley, please.
Thank you Chairman and Commission Members. This first item, GP eighteen oh eight and Z eighteen eighteen is the Gabriella Point Commerce Center. This is a major general plan amendment in conjunction with a rezoning request located on the north side of the Loop Two Oh Two freeway, on the south side of Warner Road and east of Higley Road. You can see on the aerial map, the property is surrounded by a variety of land uses from business park, which we know is the American Leadership Academy, some single-family residential, as well as commercial uses. It's important to note also that the western half of the property is currently under the jurisdiction of Maricopa County, so we are processing an annexation application in conjunction with that with that property. So we will be changing the designation on that from Maricopa County zoning district as part of this request. This is a major general plan amendment, as I mentioned. A major general plan amendment consists of land area in excess of forty acres. This site is one hundred and fifty-two point nine acres. The application or the applicant is looking to increase the business park land use designation by seventeen acres, reduce the regional commercial by fifty-six acres, and then introduce residential zoning categories to allow for multifamily development. As I mentioned at the first public hearing held on October twenty-fourth, a couple of these changes, including the introduction of the multifamily, is really to recognize existing land use entitlements on the property. As you know, there is existing multifamily zoning that is on on the subject site. So the general plan designation currently consists of business park and regional commercial. Again, the applicant in looking to acknowledge those existing zoning entitlements has shown on the general plan land use map multifamily on the northeast corner of the site. Regional commercial makes up the frontage of the property along Higley Road with business park located on the southeast corner. There are a number of goals that this subject site conforms with in terms of the general plan. Goal number one, promoting Gilbert as a community in which to live, work, and play. This provides opportunity for both retail employment and residential land uses. Also, it promotes commercial retail unemployment by locating that business park near the freeway intersection. In terms of the rezoning request, the ultimate goal of this is that it will match the the general plan that I just described. So we will be changing the Maricopa County Rural Forty-three designation, seventy-three point nine acres of that in conformance with the proposed general plan. We will be reducing the amount of multifamily low zoning that exists on the property, increasing the multifamily medium. The net effect of that multifamily is is pretty even there. Removing the light industrial and then introducing regional commercial and business park in conjunction with that general plan amendment request. So the existing zoning on the property today is as shown, the Maricopa County Rural Forty-three on the westernmost portion of the site. Light industrial kind of wrapping the multifamily here, and then that multifamily on the northeast corner. The proposed zoning district reconfigures the multifamily so that it is really in a more developable configuration. Regional commercial, as I mentioned, is part of the general plan designation along the along the street frontage, and then business park tucked to the back. What we heard at the initial planning commission study session on this item was that the planning commission would like to see how this might develop as a cohesive development. The applicant is not proposing a PAD, so this is conceptual in nature, but but gives a good idea of what the applicant's vision was as they were designing the site, where those land use boundaries might be. They've also provided some circulation throughout the site, just just as kind of a concept on how this would all integrate and work together. As part of the major general plan amendment, we reach out to agencies during a sixty-day agency review period. We received feedback from Phoenix Mesa Gateway on this project site that it is within airport overflight area three, which it indicates here that occupants will see and will hear and see aircraft landing and taking off from the airport and will experience aircraft overflights. They are in support of the current compatible land use designations that exist on site. And then we received feedback from the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce that they support the requested change. Staff also requests or recommends approval of both the general plan amendment as well as the rezoning application. There are, I apologize, there are conditions of approval with the rezoning application, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
All right, thank you. So your presentation covers both seventeen and eighteen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments or questions for staff at this time?
Ashley, it looks like, as I recall, a couple of weeks ago when we had the hearing on this over at the Southeast Regional Library, we hadn't yet heard from from the Chamber of Commerce. Is that correct?
Commissioner Bloomfield, on this piece, we had heard from the Chamber of Commerce. We had not on the northeast corner of Warner and Record, which we'll talk about later.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just I just had a question. Ashley, did you say that the chamber is opposed to the downsizing?
They are in support of this project.
This project, okay. All right, if anyone has anything else, does the applicant want to come up and give a presentation? If you state your name, record for the rec, uh, name and address for the record, and you'll have ten minutes.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting here on behalf of the Michelin family. Seems like we just saw you guys, and I guess we did about twelve days ago, and you, I won't make you suffer through my presentation unless you'd like to hear it again, although I don't do think I could do it in ten minutes. But I do want to reiterate a couple important things, and the first is that this is a very important long-term project for the Michelin family. They named it after a family member, and it's taken them several years to assemble this land, and they've already made the commitment to John and I to spend the next several years, effort, time, money to come up with a more cohesive land design that'll result in a sustainable project. And so this is that very first step to accomplish that. As we talked about, there's several land use entitlement issues that kind of are in the way right now, one of which is the general plan's lack of recognition of the underlying zoning. The other one is that half this project is actually still in the county and it's zoned for residential housing. So by you guys supporting this request, as the town staff does, as the Chamber of Commerce does, and as our economic study does, you'll be giving us that opportunity to work from that platform to build a sustainable project. So that's all I have to say, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Vice Chair?
Chairman, I, thank you. And Greg, or Mr. Davis, thank you for being here tonight as and representing the applicant. As I look at this, I'm excited about this area developing. On one hand, on the other hand, I live very close to it and and I will miss the fields and and that rural part of the agricultural field of Gilbert. And but that is the path of development. That's that's where it's all going to go. The the only the only concern and comment that I would have for you is on the RC there on the corner. In the past, we've we've seen a very dense multifamily housing come into an RC zoning district, and you're allowed to. But we but there have been some recommended conditions to be able to accommodate that and help that along. So just want to make that, point that out to you and to and to your client, and make sure that as you come in with your plans and work on plans over the coming months and years that that you'll be cognizant of of the entities that are around you and and try to blend that in there nicely. I do know that this area has potential to be in a great office park and different things, and RC zoning will be very helpful in achieving that. But just just caution against high-density residential. It might be more than what is needed here with all the other multifamily zoning around it, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Bloomfield. We are cognizant of that concern, certainly not our intent, and to be honest, that hard corner is where we've had the most activity. So we'll do our best to keep that from coming back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments, questions for the applicant? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this case? Not seeing any? Do we have any comments or questions for staff? Do we need to bring her back up? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the dais for discussion. Or we can just make a motion.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to go that route if you want.
Are we all comfortable with this?
I I'm comfortable with it.
All right, we'll start with item seventeen, GP eighteen oh eight Gabriella Point Commerce Center is our motion for that one. Commissioner Johns.
Motion to for approval to recommendation to town council for GP eighteen dash.
Now we'll do that one on a separate.
I second it.
We got a motion for approval and a second. Is there all all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries? Item eighteen, Z eighteen eighteen Gabriella Point Commerce Center. This is the zoning request.
I'll make a motion for approval to town council for Z eighteen dash eight.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries? Now we'll move along to item twenty-two.
Chairman. Chairman Anderson.
Yes.
We received a public comment card after the motion was made for item number twelve, which was a consent item. So we can make note of that in the record regarding the Muse Meeting House. There's no request to speak, but you you can, if you wanted, make a motion to to rescind the previous motion, and and but there is no specific request to speak. It just says too many in the area.
Okay, I, my opinion is, we've gone through the consent items, you know, we've gone through that whole process for that, but we can note it on the
On the record.
On the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So item twenty-two is GP eighteen oh nine, northeast corner of Warner and Racker Roads. Ashley?
Thank you Chairman Anderson and Commission Members. GP eighteen oh nine is the northeast corner of Warner and Racker Roads. The property is located, as you can see on this map, just one mile north of the Two Oh Two freeway, one mile west of Power Road at the northeast corner of Warner and Record. It is surrounded on the north, south, and east by a variety of residential land use classifications. County Island here in this vicinity to the south of the site, and then it is bounded on the east by additional employment land use designations. The, again, this is another major general plan amendment on one hundred and twenty-four point eight acres. The applicant is looking to remove the employment type land uses and develop a residential community. So the the net effect of that is a reduction by of business park by twenty-eight point four acres, a reduction of light industrial by eighty-seven point five acres. And then the community commercial, they're really just swapping out community commercial for neighborhood commercial. The acreage is roughly the same. And then the introduction of three distinct residential categories, eight to fourteen dwelling units per acre, five to eight dwelling units per acre, and then three point five, three point five to eight dwelling units per acre, that making up the the bulk of that at eighty-five point four total acres. The existing general plan land use map includes a mix of non-residential land uses from light industrial to business park, as you can see on this map illustrating those. Staff does think it's important to note that when this site was planned and developed, it included that multifamily at the northeast corner that has been developed as the Live Northgate community. Sixty-foot landscape buffers were included as part of that plan to buffer the residential to the north. In addition, Morrison Ranch provides fifty-five foot, fifty-five foot open space area along their southern border, further increasing the separation between that business park right here, right here in this area, and that multifamily that exists there today. Also, staff finds it important to note that at buildout, both Rucker and Warner roads are planned at one hundred and forty feet wide, further separating the employment land uses from the surrounding residential. In terms of the proposed land use plan, you can see that they have provided the residential three point five to five on the eastern portion of the site. They're they're more dense product here in the middle, and then, of course, the commercial corner in this location. I've mentioned in previous presentations that the change to residential on the subject site will negatively impact the adjacent employment land uses by virtue of increased setback for this property owner here on the eastern boundary. I won't spend a lot of time on that, but at our last public hearing, the question was asked if the condition of increased setbacks for those employment users exists on the employment uses to the north and south. And it does, so I wanted to answer that question for you, but also point out that that's not a condition that exists on this property today. So it's really an unexpected consequence for the property owner to the to the east that they aren't anticipating because that that additional setback requirement isn't a condition that they experience today. The subject site is also located within the Power Road growth corridor or the growth area that has been identified in our general plan. The focus of the growth area is industrial and business park employment supported by commercial centers. And I think it's important to note that this growth area is part of our general plan, which means that it was vetted and adopted by our voters. In terms of the market analysis, the applicant submitted a market analysis to staff that was reviewed. We also conducted our own analysis, a copy of which was provided as part of your staff report. I won't cover every topic within that report, and I won't even cover everyone on this slide, but there was a couple that I just wanted to take a brief moment to talk about. The first one, the fiscal impacts. Our analysis shows that the existing land uses outperformed the proposed residential. Although revenues are slightly higher with residential, the significantly higher expenditures for services tip the scale in favor of the existing land use designation with those employment uses. In terms of resiliency and wages, the town has carefully planned and targeted employment areas throughout the general plan process in an effort to improve and diversify the industry mix. Currently, retail and food services top the list of our employment land uses, but those types of uses don't lead to the high-wage jobs that the town is really seeking. This brings us back to the fundamental question of what type of community are we trying to build? And I think staff would argue that we are really trying to build a community that can weather storms, that's resilient, and will make it through a recession if we if we happen to have one again. In terms of development, growth, and clustering, the market analysis talks about the growth that's occurring in the adjacent Mesa five-two-one-two zip code and the amount, the significant amount of growth that they're seeing in that area. And and we would argue that we can't be competitive with that if we don't have the land available to to compete. So what I've done is I've overlaid an aerial of Mesa just so we can look at a kind of the regional context on our general plan, just to show a broader area of land. And you can see, we've got employment uses in the northwest corridor that are developed, very low vacancy rate. We've got Mercy Gilbert Medical Campus that that provides employment to the town. Rivillon Park Lucero, both, you know, successful and and developing and experiencing low vacancy rates. You've got the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport as well as development along Power Road. Most recently, we've got Weta Ventures that the planning commission saw and approved. Just, I believe it was in September, an industrial development. And really, all of this is to say that development is converging in this area of the town. So the next place for employment to begin to develop is along this Power Road growth corridor. And a change at this time is really a missed opportunity for Gilbert to remain competitive. I had a meeting, actually, just earlier today with an industrial developer, this this piece of property, they were, we were fortunate that they were willing to let us share this. It's located just kitty corner to the subject site, Warner Road, located here with this being power. This this portion right here is the Weta Ventures piece that was just approved, and they're looking at expanding that beyond that piece. So they have identified this area as one where they see employment potential. At the last meeting, we heard some discussion about opportunity zone and the opportunity zone that exists in Mesa and how that will really drive all of the development to Mesa and make this piece less viable. So I had an opportunity to talk with Economic Development about the opportunity zone. And what they shared with me is that the national trend is for opportunity zones to not really spur development. Because they serve as a tax shelter, they're saying that companies are buying up that land and just parking their money without developing anything. And and they they said that if they saw that we were losing opportunity because of the opportunity zone that exists in Mesa, that would then be a point where our decision makers could implement policies where we offer our own incentives to compete. We also took a look at the townwide land use classification distribution. This this graph right here depicts both vacant and non-vacant parcels. You can see that the bulk of the site is single-family residential, which you might expect, followed by commercial, and then industrial makes up only four percent of the land use distribution. And although we would expect that a community would would contain mostly residential-type uses, we, again, can't remain competitive if we don't have the employment land use designation. So so it's really important for us to protect that. And while we can acknowledge that it is, that there is a huge desire by home builders to locate in Gilbert, we've reached a decision point where we really have to decide what our community vision is and what's important to us. And and really how we create that diversity mix to ensure that as our kids are raised here and then go off to college, they have a place to come home to, to work, to live, to raise their family here. The applicant has provided a conceptual development plan, and I don't think staff is really here to say that this isn't a good plan. I mean, it's a well-thought-out plan, it's well-designed, but the question is really, is this the right location for it? And and beyond that is, have they proven that the existing general plan doesn't work here? And we don't think that they have. So it it's not a question of whether or not this is a good plan. It's a question of, did we make a mistake in our existing general plan, and staff would argue that we that we haven't. As part of our sixty-day agency review, we received comments back from the Chamber of Com, the Chamber of Commerce, who would like to, who is opposing the downzoning request and would request that the commission support staff's recommendation of denial. We also received comments from the Phoenix Mesa Gateway that they are in support of the existing land use classifications on site. So with that, staff would encourage the planning commission to recommend denial of this project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Ashley. Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff?
Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff? Mr. Johnson?
Just real quick, I'll probably come back to questions and let it go through, but you, you talked about a lot about the opportunity zones and the, the comments on economic, economic development department. Is there anybody here from the Economic Development Park Department that could speak to that?
I don't, oh, there is, yeah.
And would it be possible to have them kind of speak to that a little bit clearer and kind of some of their, because a lot of this is driven by them. So I'd like to hear from them on, you know, especially the, the opportunity zones, because there's a huge one over in Mesa from our, our last meeting. And really, this one small piece, is it going to impact that?
Good evening, members of the, of the Commission. My name is Dan Henderson, and I serve as the Economic Development Director. Was there a question that you had that you wanted me to chime in on?
Yeah, exactly, Dan. Thank you for coming up.
Yeah, my pleasure.
So, we, we appreciate the presentation on, on what they're saying, but seeing the presentation that we saw last time over at the Regional Library, the economic zones that was brought up by the applicant that shows Mesa, which, you know, is a huge footprint. And, but there were some statements in, in, that we heard a bit ago that it does not help the, and, and so, okay, let me back up. The entire thing is, is this going to be a valuable piece of, of property in the future or not? So that, for, for light industrial. So, one of the key points is going to the opportunity zones. But there was a statement made during the presentation just now that's saying they just hold it and throw the money in there. Well, is, is there really truth to that? Is, and I kind of wanted to hear from your department to say, is that's really what's happening, or is that just something to throw out there? Or how are these opportunity zones really impacting this area of the Power Corridor?
Sure. So, Chair, members of the Commission, to address the, the question, you know, there's a number of, there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty around what is and what is not the opportunity zone. I think the idea behind an opportunity zone federally is to create sort of a, a tax place for monies to go into. Candidly, Gilbert has an opportunity zone in and around its, in its Heritage District, and we're excited about the opportunities that, that these O-zones or opportunity zones will, will create. There, when you look at what an opportunity zone is, and of course, I'm no tax expert, but the rules and regulations create a vehicle for which you can place money into an investment and essentially place investment into these areas. And there are years of, the amount of time that you keep your money into these programs, and I can get into some specifics, I have on the legislation here. As you get into the length of time with which you place your money in there, there are tax benefits for doing so. At no point do opportunity zones suggest that you actually have to do development. What we're seeing, I've, I've been around the country over the last two years, attending a number of different conferences and trying to gain a better understanding of what is and what is not a benefit of the opportunity zone. Again, albeit a very new program, what we're seeing nationally, the trends that we're seeing, is people are beginning to park money into the opportunity zones. They're not putting money into investments or asset classes that allow people to build, you know, a light industrial product. Now, these groups are, you're going to see people placing monies into these areas, they're going to be directly linked, loosely linked, generally affiliated with developers or folks that want to do development. But there's no rule or regulation that says you physically have to develop. In fact, when I look at, you know, what these, what these opportunities are, you know, essentially, it says you can get the tax benefits even if you don't live or work or have a business in an opportunity zone, all you need to do is invest a recognized gain in a qualified opportunity fund and elect to defer the tax on that gain. None of that says that a physical development is going to take place, it just says that you're putting money into, into a fund that, that can be parked in this area. So again, I'm no tax expert. If, if your decision this evening is based on the rules and regulations of an opportunity zone, we can certainly bring a, an expert in from a number of the different law firms and, and have them chime in on what is and what is not related to the rules and regulations. After attending a number of these ventures nationwide to understand more about what these opportunity zones are, we're seeing people place money into funds, we're not seeing people placing money into development. So this idea that Gilbert's going to lose because on the other side of Power Road, you're going to see an opportunity zone, and Mesa subsequently going to win every time, I just don't see it.
Appreciate that clarification.
You bet.
Well, that's, I, I think everything you're saying is, is speculation of what you think the developers would do, that they're parking money there. Because I have experiences with two projects of my own that the developer I'm working with, it was a rezone and a flip. When they found out it was in these opportunity zones, they decided to develop those projects now because in the long run, they're making more money. So, I, for me, I'm sure there is instances of people parking money in these types of projects, but my experience with developers, to me, I think they lose out on the long run by parking money there. They make their money on developing the land and then unloading it later on. In this case, you know, just, they make a lot more after that 10-year investment than they would just parking their money there in the land. So I guess it's just, right now, it's, it's a little hard for me to swallow that, you know, and there's so much of that opportunity zone in Mesa, you're also speculating that that entire area, it's probably hundreds of acres, that people are just going to park their money there and not develop it, which I would not get, I would guess would not be the case.
Sure. Chair members of the, of the Commission, I'm actually not speculating, I'm actually telling you what the trends are nationwide. If, if the, if the applicant told you at this open meeting a week or so ago that this is what is going to happen in an opportunity zone, my guess is he's probably also speculating. And so, if, if you're looking to get absolute direction on what an opportunity zone is designed to do, again, we can bring in a tax lawyer rather than a zoning attorney, but that's up to you, members of the Commission.
Well, I don't think we need to go that far. So, is there any more, have you, have you, have any more questions or comments from Ms. Anderson while we have them? All right, thank you for your time. If you want to hang around in case we want to have, have something more for you in the future. The applicant is here, would like to give a presentation. We give you name and address for the record, and I'm assuming you condensed your presentation out to 10 minutes tonight.
Hold on. There you go. Does he want to use the keys? Oh, no. Yeah, you can use the keys or click the mouse. Whatever you need.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And members of the Commission, thank you for your patience. We needed to get the PowerPoint set up here briefly. My name is Ralph Pugh at 1744 South Valvista, Suite 217. Here tonight on behalf of Lennar Homes, and we have with us Mr. Alan Jones, the President of the Arizona Division, and Mr. Todd Scorro, Vice President for Land Development. We also have the property owners, Mr. Ed Grant, Gary Jestat, and Ed Grant Jr., and Tim Grant are here with us tonight, who are the owners of the property. Also with us is Mr. Mark Singerman, the representative from Rockefeller Group who owned this property during the past decade and tried to develop it and did the best they could at that. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, you heard a lot about this case two weeks ago. So, in respect of your 10-minute limit, we're going to honor that, obviously, and not bore you any more than necessary, but please think back to what we talked about two weeks ago. There were many, many important points that were raised there. And what I'd like to say right away is, with respect to the opportunity zones, this is not a fight between us, the town, and economic development, it's totally unnecessary. It's a conversation about reasonable land use. And, and frankly, the interesting thing is, the one entity that is the decision-maker tonight, and ultimately with the council, is not here. The decision-makers are industrial employment developers, and their voice is not heard here tonight. They've been heard over the last decade, and they've done nothing with this site at Recker and Warner. So, the other choice would have been to parade a bunch of developers here tonight that do economic development in industrial parks and ask them to testify to you why this isn't a good site. We don't think that's necessary, we think it's common sense, and we don't need to have a, you know, kind of a tit-for-tat boxing match about economic development, which is a very healthy thing, but it must be done with respect to the property owner and the development potential that exists. Also, consider this, we have Lennar Homes, who's the applicant tonight, the largest home building company in the world, in the current, in the country, I should say. So what is that? That's not a good business? That's not an important business? They don't do good things in the community? They employ hundreds, probably thousands of people? So I think we should look at it as a balance, and we would encourage you to do that and say to yourself, is this 125-acre site, is it really ideally situated for development? And the answer to that is categorically no. It has got to be the least important property for economic industrial development on the list of properties that the Economic Development Department has. That would be my guess, because it has no frontage on Power Road, has no freeway access, no visibility from the freeway. Recker, for heaven's sakes, is a residential street. No one drives down Recker Road from baseline to Pecos and goes, gee, this is wonderful, let's build a business here, this is just what I want to do. Right in the middle of people and houses, the site is surrounded on three sides by residential. And if you took a, a bigger view of it, it would be surrounded to the, to the west by miles of residential. So please look at that Power Road Growth Corridor as what it really is. It is one half-mile from Power to the west, and from slightly above Elliott to slightly above Williams Field Road, give or take. That half-mile corridor, that's the corridor. This 125 acres is an appendage, it's a growth that somehow morphed into there when Rockefeller came along and zoned the property. Why? Because they thought they could make it work. Now, because of that effort, the current property owner is burdened with this vision that somehow the town now has that this would be a marvelous property. Our view of it is, Commissioners, it's time to move the property back to where it was before Rockefeller began its vision and development efforts, and also to remove the business park that's on the south half of it and make it residential. And with respect to opportunity zones, I'd like to just say, at the hearing a couple weeks ago, I, I did not say anything about that this would be positively, would absolutely work, and every developer's going to come here because of it. What we said was, is Mesa making a huge mistake, right? By designating an opportunity zone on thousands of acres east of this property? Of course they're not. They're giving an opportunity for the opportunity zone to work, and we gave to you highlights, and, and if you remember, headlines from five prominent financial magazines. We had Forbes, we had CNBC, we had the Wall Street Journal, I can't remember all of them, that all promoted and, and advocated the benefit of, of the O-Z zone. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for, for, for listening to that, that brief statement, and we urge you to, when you make decisions on these cases that might be tough calls, err in favor of the private property owner and in favor of development. Because quite frankly, neither the town, nor the staff, nor economic development, and frankly, neither can the property owner decide what's going to happen here. The only entity that ultimately decides is the one who spends money and builds on it. That speaks louder than all the colors we can color on a map and every dream we might have as a community. We cannot and should not, as a municipality, burden a private property owner with carrying a dream and a vision that just isn't going to happen. So, we, we reminded you of a few things last week, let's, a couple of weeks ago, let's cover a few topics here. Of course, you've seen the beautiful plan, this, this residential community has row town homes, motor courts, single-family detached housing, has a central roundabout area and a wonderful walking area into the commercial space, what we've always looked for in this type of development. You can see the designs that can come forward here. This lists all the reasons we gave to you last two weeks ago as to why this isn't a good site for economic development, I've covered those pretty much in the initial statement. Let's go to a couple of new ideas here. You remember this was the issue that we talked about. This chart shows that it benefits the town $468,000 over to go economic development with industrial on the site instead of residential. But the flaw in that thought is, that number starts today. It assumes that a helicopter drops in a huge industrial development on the entire site tomorrow, and revenue is generated. That's not happening, it's not coming, developers will not choose this site. The zip code analysis, really interesting. This whole concept of trying to urge us to believe in agglomeration, what a word, right? Interesting word. Because all these uses are congregated or agglomerated in an area, somehow magically, this corner, this property, this 124 acres is going to benefit from that accumulation of uses. Well, if it does, it will be uses that accumulate on the east side of Power in Mesa, because nothing has happened so far in Gilbert. Now, the Power Road Corridor is important, but it has not emerged, and other areas have gone much faster and with much better development. Here's the whole zip code issue, I'm not going to get much into that further, but interestingly enough, the property where we're located is the least performing zip code in the East Valley area, and in the Phoenix, not entirely in the Phoenix area, but in this map, all the way from East Mesa to Chandler, it's the least performing area. So please don't burden us by being next to the best. So here's the, here's the memo from the Chamber, you'll remember this, on Valvista and Ray, they recommended approval to you of this case. Why? Because the two corners of retail had been struggling for years, and there were better retail offerings next to it, at the mall. That's exactly what we're saying about this site. It has struggled for years, and the Power Road Corridor struggled for years, and there are much better sites along the freeway and on Power Road itself. It's very interesting to hear what the Chamber says here. They claim that Power Road is the most highly sought-after area in the valley for economic development. Now please, Commissioners, let's take a deep breath and think about that for a minute. We love our friends at the Chamber, but that in all senses is an overly generous comment. Power Road is not the highest and most sought-after area in the valley. And also, the Chamber nicely says, it's too soon to decide. That's too soon to decide in people's minds who are not vested in the property, who don't own the property, who don't carry the cost of the property, and who aren't searching to find developers. We love our friends at the Chamber, I'll say that again, but in fairness, we had 10 minutes to present the entire case, the staff report had not even been written, and the Economic Development Department had not responded with their economic study. So all they got out of us was a quick 10 minutes. Here's our final comment, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, this is the intersection of Recker and Warner today. If this is such a vital part to the town, and if the Power Road Corridor is so important, why hasn't the town taken the effort to make it a real intersection, put lights in it, and, and encourage people to come here? Power Road today, and, and this intersection of Recker and Warner, look pretty much like the way they did 10, 20 years ago. Not much has changed. The only things that have developed there frankly are the Target Center along the freeway in Power, and frankly, I did that with Vestar years ago. We did that before the freeway even came and finished it right when the freeway was there, and then the Walmart Center south of it. So we urge you, Commissioners, please think of this site and realize it is not well-situated for economic development, and we urge your recommendation of approval for this general plan amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your patience.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any comments, questions for the applicant? Well, don't go too far, I do have one card that somebody wants to speak, and then after this person, you'll have an additional five minutes if you want them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I do have a card from Mark Singerman, wish to speak in favor. Name, address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Singerman, 500 North Juniper, Chandler, Arizona. I am the Vice
Name, address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Singerman, 500 North Juniper, Chandler, Arizona. I am the Vice President and Regional Director for the Rockefeller Group in Arizona. We purchased this property that we're talking about here in 2007. Back then, it was the hole in the donut. Were it not for some type of family disagreement back in the 1990s between the Morrison family and the Beebe family, this property would have been part of Morrison's general plan amendment in the late 1990s, and this would have been zoned, single-family residential. But Beebe didn't want any part of it. So in 2007, Rockefeller purchased the property. We rezoned it from half-residential and half-business park to primarily light industrial. We wanted the whole thing to be light industrial, but after a meeting with Scott Morrison, he said, no, you can't put light industrial up against our single family. So we introduced, thank God, the apartment element as a buffer element between the light industrial and the single family. Well, Live Northgate has been a hugely successful project, and so we continued to market the balance of the property. You know, we chalked up the first few years, 2010, 11, 12, maybe 13, to the resection as the reason we got no interest from light industrial users or developers. But by 2014, the area had started to recover, and by 2015, it started to dawn on us that we may have made a mistake. And we may have misread the market here, and we are now of the opinion that clearly this property should have stayed residential and that its highest and best use is residential. We worked with economic development, we worked with GPEC, Colliers worked every day for 10 years to market this to light industrial users and retail users, and we got nowhere, literally. The only thing we were able to do is the apartments, and we sold a five-acre site to the church who never built, which was also a disappointment. But in reality, this would never have been part of the Power Road opportunity, or excuse me, the growth corridor, had it not been for that rift between Morrison and Beebe back then. It would never have been made part of that zone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Smith, I actually have a couple of questions for you. How long did you own the land? How long did Rockefeller own that land?
We owned it from 2007 to 2017.
So 10 years. And what year did you rezonate to the?
2009.
2009. Okay. And then that Live Northgate project, has that won any design awards by any chance?
You know it is.
Just joking with you.
We worked together for two and a half years.
Just joking with you on that one. Okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for?
I do, I do. So reading the report in the package, it looks like you guys had sought after 60 different companies, 60 probably plus, and there was still no interest in it. What are the primary reasons for it? Do you have any idea? I mean, I know you were saying that you guys felt, got the general idea that you made the wrong decision on the zoning there and the acquisition of this property, but what are you seeing? I mean, we've heard from Mr. Pugh. I would love to hear some feedback from you.
Sure. Recker does not have an interchange at the freeway. Warner, essentially dead ends. Our traffic study back in 2009 showed that there's more traffic on Recker than there is on Warner, and I think that's still the case today. So the arterial has less traffic than the minor arterial, which is your first indication of problems. But really, the lack of freeway visibility was proximity to the freeway. Industrial users want to be as close to the freeway as they can get. You know, their business is to manufacture or warehouse and distribute goods, and the closer they are to the freeway, the less costs they have of operation. Many of these companies, one of their biggest costs is gasoline or diesel fuel. So the closer they are to the freeway to get to where they're going, or the closer they are to the freeway for their suppliers and their customers, the more attractive it is. This property, having residential on three sides, was also a bit of a, you know, inhibitor. So, you know, we, again, we danced with at least that many companies over a 10-year period and could never get anybody to first base. I mean, we never even got a chance to do a letter of intent with anybody. So, you know, look, we've been in the development business for 90 years. We know how to develop light industrial, we know how to develop retail, we know how to develop this site, okay? But if you're in the business for 90 years, the one thing you find, you learn, is that not every decision you make is the right one. You're going to have some property that doesn't work the way you thought it would work, and you move on. And so that's what we did. We took a huge financial hit on this property, and, you know, we know today that the highest and best use for this is residential, as evidenced by the success of Live Northgate. Did that answer?
Yeah, I mean, I had my assumptions, right, on what I think, but I just wanted to hear back from somebody who's owned the property for 10 years on some of the feedback that you're getting from these businesses that have rejected any interest in 60-plus companies. That's a lot. And I see various different things. I know that Recker Road seems more of a quiet street, surrounded by residential, and that's probably one of the biggest things in my thought process, but I wanted to hear your feedback. Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, happy to discuss it with anybody, but we really tried. I mean, thank God we were in a position to own this property without debt. Otherwise, we would never have been able to hang on for 10 years.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your time. Mr. Pugh, if you want to come back up to make a final statement, you'll have five minutes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a quick minute to follow up on a comment that was made in the staff report, dealing with a very important topic that I forgot to mention to you, and that is the total number of residential acres remaining available for development in the town. The question was raised to us, why can't Lennar build somewhere else? And the statement was made that roughly there's 2,800 acres of residential land undeveloped in the town of Gilbert. The answer to that question is, there's 2,800 acres of vacant, residentially-zoned land, but not available. 560 acres of that number are in escrow today with home builders. 600-plus acres are already closed and purchased by home builders. But if all you do is look at an aerial map, you go, oh, yeah, that's vacant residential, but the underlying ownership is already builders. That leaves about 775 acres that are really pretty much the Zinke assets, and that land will get sold and available when and if the owners decide to sell it. And they're not in that position yet, and some of that land's against the treatment plant facility. So what you really have left is somewhere between 400 and 600 acres of isolated parcels throughout the town, none of which Lennar would buy to develop a master-plan community. You can't do that on 15 acres, 35 acres, 20, whatever it might be scattered throughout the town. So we just wanted to make that point very clear, that there's not 2,800 acres of residential available. There's very little, and it's very isolated in small parcels. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Question for Mr. Pugh. What would you determine to be the development time needed to move ahead with this project? I think the worst thing that could happen would be to see it. What would be the development time to develop this if it were given approval for a resident?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Smith, the answer to that question is now, immediately. We have a zoning case pending that's filed, that follows the site plan that we illustrated to you, and as quickly as we can process that case through the public hearings, we will move forward with final Platts and development, and soon as possible. I would certainly think that during the year of 2019, we would be in those engineering processes, and at the end of 19 or early 20, we'd be building.
Would they, so if they proceed with the zoning case, would they run the standard plan case alongside that zoning case, or would that come in after pending zoning, or?
Mr. Chairman, if I heard your question correctly, our zoning case has been filed. It's following this case, but it's not on the same exact track. If the council votes to approve the general plan amendment, then the zoning case will be back to you within a few months at the latest.
I understand that, but what about the standard plan application, the DR approval for the standard plans? Where's that? Would they submit that not too long in the future?
Mr. Chairman, what plan are you asking about?
So for the houses, right? They have to submit standard plans for, I'm assuming each house is going to have a standard plan.
Oh, oh. The standard plans will follow, and we hope to coincide that review with the ultimate zoning case and the Platts, so.
Okay, so that's what I was looking for, because that would tell us how serious Lennar is.
Well, not only is it serious, but, for example, the row townhomes, the row townhouses, are very similar to the product that Lennar's building in Annecy, where they took over that project that are on Val Vista, south of the mall, and have done very well with that product. So that's conceptually very close to what we're doing, and the other products are already well-developed.
Okay. Does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Pugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your time. Ashley, can you come back up, please?
I do have one question for you. So I know the town's currently going through their major general plan update right now. Has, do you know, has the town looked at other areas in the town that could be designated as light industrial? So say if this was to get rezoned to something else, is the town looking for other opportunities in the town that would make more sense to have that type of designation?
Chairman Anderson, that's a great question. We are really early on in the development of that general plan. As you know, we've had a couple of outreach sessions with our general plan advisory group, one community meeting, and then currently, we've got our website up and available for comments, for people to submit that. And so we really haven't reached a point where we are digesting that information that we've received in developing a new plan. Catherine might be able to weigh in a little bit more on, you know, how she sees that process moving forward and what options are open as that plan is developed.
Thank you, Ashley. Chairman Anderson and Commissioners, I think overall, we won't see any dramatic land use changes in the upcoming general plan update, more refinements of the existing, and I don't think we necessarily have areas that we will be targeting for additional employment lands because so much of the community is reaching build-out.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Anderson, I had a couple of points, too, if you don't mind me just responding to. One is, I just wanted to point out that although the town has occasionally, and the Chamber has occasionally been okay with the rezoning or downzoning of those commercial corners, those are small commercial corners, and this is just a significantly different scenario where we're looking at changing the designation of, you know, 100-plus acres of employment land uses. This isn't commercial, this is employment. So I just wanted to kind of make that distinction between what staff has supported in the past and the Chamber has and has not supported in the past. And then I also wanted to point out that along Power Road, nothing has developed in terms of, you know, significant employment corridor along, you know, significant employment along that corridor to date. But as I talked about in our presentation with the What Aventures piece, that is literally across the street from this subject site, we're starting to see trends where that industrial development is heading this direction. With Eastmark to the east of the property, we're kind of seeing that center point shifting further east. So while right now it might seem like Power Road is too far to the east or not close enough to some of these corridors, just the trend is that development is heading this way. And so we just want to make sure that we're really considering the long-term impacts of this kind of short-sighted decision of having this developer in front of you today. There's always going to be a market for residential in the town of Gilbert, and we expect that. It's a great community, and, you know, we want to make sure that it's, we're positioning ourselves that we can be competitive in the long run, and we're not just making these land use changes for this short-term gain. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Has there been any development in that light industrial section that's to the east before you cross over Power?
There is not.
Is there any applications for development in that area?
Not to my knowledge. We have had south, gosh, north, I'm sorry, north at Elliott, there's been that school that developed in that light industrial piece. But in terms of employment land uses, there has not been significant investment along the Power Road growth area to date.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ashley? Commissioner Fuller?
You had provided some examples before of some developments. I know Rivellon was one of the ones you had mentioned. I know that they have good access right there with the 202. Of all of those examples that you gave, were any similar to this location where it doesn't have direct access off the freeway?
So looking back at this map, there's, I mean, light industrial development here, you know, they have access to the railroad, but the US-60 is located up in this area. So the industrial that we see that's successful and developed here in this area doesn't have, you know, immediate access to that freeway. Of course, you're right, these developments, Park Lucero and Rivellon, do have more immediate access, but I think this northwest corridor is a great example of one that doesn't have freeway access that is developed.
Any other questions for Ashley? All right, thank you, Ashley. So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dice for discussion. Does anybody want to kick it off? Commissioner Fuller?
Well, thanks for everybody presenting tonight. It was good information from both sides there. You know, the difficulty with this one is we try to, up here, share the town's vision, and we have the town wanting to deny this project, as well as the Chamber of Commerce also not in favor of the project and the rezoning. However, when I look at this corridor, I look at Recker, and you can drive up and down it, and there is no light industrial. It's churches, it's residential properties, and in fact, and schools. And in fact, right on this property, we have that apartment complex that's right adjacent to this. There is no future plan for a TI to Recker Road. I think that's why we've had such success at Rivellon and a few of these other developments, direct access to the freeway. Those are great locations. Power Road, it's interesting that there's been no activity there, because they do have the freeway access, and that would be a better site than this particular site that's a half-mile away from Power Road, up to a mile away. I think some of that light industrial that we see up there in that northwest corner, it is adjacent to the railroad, and that tends to be some of the best locations for industrial uses. I think that's why that one's a little bit different in how that developed. But overall, I do see some value in the project that was presented today. In fairness to the town, they, you know, when they develop these roads, I know there was mention made to, why didn't they improve this intersection? But it also lends itself to the case that they're making here is there isn't the traffic demand. If it's going to be a town project, it's driven by traffic, or they wait for development to do their half-street improvements. This project, they've sat on this land for 10 years. It looks like they really did try. Do we wait another 10 years or more when we have a pretty viable project? I wish there were some opportunities where we could swap some other land to have some more light industrial. I just don't personally see this particular corridor potentially ever developing into that, and do we sit on that forever in just the hope because of the way it's currently zoned? Those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Chairman.
Vice Chair.
I, I liked hearing what Greg had to say, and, and those have been my thoughts as well is, I look at the area, I drive by it weekly, and, and on the south side of that Warner and, and Wrecker intersection, there are two schools, two charter schools that are right there, and we look at, at what is, I don't know how the traffic would be patterned through that light industrial and, and how it is currently if it were to develop in that way. But if it potentially came down Wrecker Road right there in front of all those schools, I just, I just see that being a problem. Because the schools have such an impact there, traffic impact there early in the mornings every day, I just, I just see that being a conflict. And will it continue to be so? Yes, even if we do it with residential, but, but at least there won't be large trucks coming through there and heavy, heavy equipment that way. So I'm, I'm inclined to say, let's, to actually recommend approval rather than recommend denial of this GP case.
Anyone else? Commissioner Johns?
Yeah, I appreciate both civil engineers' comments on that. I, I kind of echo the fact that when I first heard this case originally, it really against, it went against my grain because I hate to see any kind of downzoning, especially of light industrial, which, you know, I think our town needs to, and to find more of, because our, our community is developing, and through the light industrial and the parks, that's what's going to support our community as we go forward and towards build out. But as I put down my notes, again, I, I don't like to see any, any kind of downzone along that side. But we've heard this case several times, and we, you know, there's points that we're giving, you know, a couple of weeks ago that wasn't even brought up tonight. That, that kind of swayed the, the decision back and forth from both sides. And I think both sides have really presented very well. And, but coming into this also, I do agree, there's, there's a lot of, a long record, there's a lot of churches and charter schools, and it being driven by what is the need, and that's, that's been the need so far. And not to mention the multifamily that's already started there. It's already kind of set the pace from what I see. And I think one of the big deciding factors on my side, besides the, the fact that the owner has it, is ready to move forward with it and ready to develop it, you know, it's a bird in the hand for the, the town in that aspect. Again, I do agree that seen opportunity for employment go away, but this, this wasn't originally a light industrial community, or, or light industrial zoning. It was originally a, a residential zoning. So that, that's a heavy factor that weighs on me. So I, I tend to agree in going along the same pulse of what I've heard so far that my, my vote tonight was, would be based on those decisions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I guess my two cents is, we've had two very reputable developers involve this land, one Rockefeller who owned it for 10 years and rezoned it from residential to light industrial and just could not find anyone to want to develop on this land. And now we have a second very reputable developer that wants to develop on this land, Lennar. So my point of view is, the land's been vacant for 10 years. The town really isn't taking any financial risk if we keep this zone light industrial. What happens if it stays vacant for another 10 years? I mean, we just lost out on a good development. The landowner loses out on their opportunity to sell the land. And, you know, the town's just not carrying any financial risk if it stays vacant because we keep this zoning as is. And I just don't think it's our, our decision to handcuff people to that because we think in the future it's going to get developed. I mean, that's just, we're thinking, we don't know that yet. I mean, we haven't had any applications of development on the light industrial yet in that area. I think if we had at least one application, I think that would be a strong case to, to keep the light industrial. But because it's been vacant for so land, so long, I would be inclined to side with approving the application. So with that being said, does anybody want to make a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of GP 18-09, the northeast corner, corner of Warner and Wrecker Roads for a major general plan amendment.
Okay, recommendation for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Motion carries. And this will be heard again in front of town council. What is that date, Ashley?
December 6th.
December 6th, thank you. Now we will move along to... Item 19Z18-21, Enclave at Madera Park. This one, I am going to recuse myself from this case and hand it over to the vice chair.
Might be a struggle. I'm a, I'm a civil engineer, and you know how to tell an, an extrovert engineer? He looks at your shoes when he's talking to you instead of his own, so that's a, this is going to be a tough one on me. Ashley, we would like to hear from you on, on this case.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bloomfield and commission members. Z1821 is Enclave at Madera Park. Let me jump ahead here. This is located behind the First United Methodist Church off of Cooper Road. It's on the south side of Madera Park Drive here, and then Smoke Tree touches the, the very bottom corner of the site and then along the, the southern boundary. The existing site, it's important to note, is part of the Madera Park PAD that exists to the north, and then Candlewood that exists to the south. So it is part of two existing planned area developments. And as part of this request, the applicant will be removing the subject site from both Madera Park and Candlewood PADs and creating a new planned area development called Enclave at Madera Park. This is a 10.93 acre site, again, located east of the First United Methodist Church, currently owned by First United Methodist Church. They are proposing 52 lots. The existing general plan designation on site is 3.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre. At 52 lots, the site comes out to just under 5 dwelling units per acre, so there is no accompanying general plan amendment request as part of this. Existing zoning on site is single-family 7, and they are requesting a zone change to SFD, single-family detached, and then, as I mentioned before, removing the site from, from those two existing PADs. In conjunction with their rezoning request, they are including that planned area development overlay. And what that will do is that will define the plan of development. They're proposing to increase the minimum lot size, decrease maximum building heights, and then make some modifications to the setback, as well as establishing minimum lot dimensions. The SFD zoning district doesn't have minimum lot dimensions, so they have made some proposals there. This is the zoning exhibit, so the church site exists right here. They'll be creating a new parcel with the parcel line falling here. You can see this dash line right here is the dividing line between the two existing PADs. So Madera Park here to the north, Candlewood here to the east, or to the south, I'm sorry. And then to the east along this side is the Lago Estancia community as well. So a number of established communities built in about the 80s around the subject site. Looking at the development plan, the applicant has proposed one access point off of Madera Park Drive located at this location. They have an emergency access only along Smoke Tree. You'll find there's a condition of approval that, that requires that that be emergency access only. Development, again, single-family detached, they have proposed private streets throughout the development. Another deviation request that the applicant has made is access to this parking lot here. The land development code prohibits access to a non-residential use through a residential street. Because of the nature of the site and the inability to really locate this parking lot or a drive through this area, their only option for access of this relocated parking lot is through this existing development. So they are seeking a deviation request for that as well, which we presented at the study session and got some positive feedback on. This area right here is where they are proposing their open space amenity as well as retention. One thing that I think you'll hear tonight from the public, and I'm sure you've read in some of those opposition letters, is that there's, there is concern about retention and drainage between the two communities. And so I just want to touch on that really briefly, that this, this site currently is the retention basin for both the Madera Park and Candlewood HOA properties. So in developing this site, the applicant will be required to retain the volume of water that it currently retains, as well as any new retention based on this development itself. So they have proposed that through underground retention as well as surface retention on site. They have not yet gone through the process of having that drainage report reviewed, but you will notice that there is a condition of approval requiring that prior to final plat, they have received, that they do receive approval of that. And so that will come moving forward. The applicant did send me an email today. I believe that they've got a copy of that report ready to go, so staff will begin reviewing that very quickly here. As I mentioned, they are proposing to increase the lot sizes from the SFD lots. The LDC requires 3,000 square feet lots. These will be 3,200. They've established minimum lot dimensions of 40 feet wide by 72 feet deep, reduced the maximum height from 36 feet to 30 feet. They still will be allowed to have two-story units. And then they've increased the, the side setbacks. It's currently zero feet or five feet, and they've increased it to five and five. And staff does recommend approval of this. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know the applicant is here as well. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ashley. I appreciate your input. Are there any questions for staff? Go ahead, Brian.
Waiting for you to give me permission. So, thank you, Ashley. So SF7 to FFD, is there a minute? You had a thing up there that said the, the acres per lot, or requirement for SF7? Did I receive that correctly, or?
The, so SF7 is 7,000 square foot lots.
How much is that per acre?
Oh, gosh.
Sorry. Civil engineers.
I don't know.
Is, is it per acre about the same? I mean, I guess that's going back to the question. So how much are we?
The, well, the, I mean, each lot is, is roughly 4,000 square feet smaller. I mean, we're going from 7,000 square foot lots down to 3,000, or, well, 3,200.
But in this, because they have a lot of, this site has a lot of challenges because of such a large basin, such a lot, I guess my question is, is are we looking at about the same acres per lot as with the, with this layout with the D as I said? It's a really odd question, I know. I'm kind of going out there, and I threw you under, you know, under the math bus. But, you know, how many, how many are we? I guess I can play with it and look at the math. I was looking it up on the zoning real fast just to see for myself.
Sure. Commissioner Johns, I, I think I understand where, where you're going with that. And I don't think that, that we went through that exercise of seeing what it could have developed under the SF7, if, if that's the question.
Yeah, because I think it's going to come down to weigh, weigh on that a lot tonight. So I was just trying to cut it off at the, at the, you know, at the beginning here, and maybe when the applicant comes up, we can clarify that. But I'm, I'm assuming that because of the frictions at this site scene, because of such a big basin, and, and what they're giving on the sides, they're getting about the same per acre as what it, and maybe that's a question for the applicant as we come up. So maybe I'm giving a little precursor on what I'm going to ask there, too. And this site looks a lot different than, this is the wrong site, than what we saw before. It looks like they lost a lot of, or has this always been the same? Didn't they have more lots over there on the?
Commissioner Johns, this, this is substantially similar to what they had submitted before. What, what you may be recalling is on a previous iteration, they showed within this, within this retention area, the underground tanks. So there, so there was some drawing on there, but...
I thought there was more lots over there, so I'm sorry.
Yeah. They, they did have some images on that that, that we went ahead and had them removed because we don't want to, to tie that down to their development plan and include it in an ordinance. So that may be what you're recalling, that, that there was not lots here, but there was something shown here.
And again, there's no deviations from, did I hear you correctly? There's no deviations from what they're asking for, except for that connection to the church?
Yeah, the only deviations that they're proposing are increasing the standards of SFD. So they're not looking at any setback reductions or anything like that. They're increasing site setbacks, reducing building heights, those types of things.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Ashley, thank you. We have, we have 23 requests up here, 23 cards of people who have expressed an opinion, five saying that they are opposed and don't wish to speak, and we have five that are opposed and have marked nothing else, and they may wish to speak. And there's 13 who have marked that they're opposed and would like to speak. However, if we stay here and we give everybody three minutes apiece, we're going to be here for another 40 minutes. My recommendation would be that if you have a couple of spokespeople that you would like to appoint, they could each take 10 minutes apiece, and we could have a couple of those and, or we could... I, I'm fine with that. It's just that if, if there isn't a parent spokesperson or two, that usually is helpful. So.
I think typically what he's trying to say in our meetings, to be respectful to you and to the minutes, we'll sit here all night and listen to each individual. That's, that's, that's fine. But in, in general case, a lot of times we ask for someone to come together with the common thoughts, common, and, and speak for it. They'll get more time, and they can build it up. Now, you didn't get a chance to prepare for that, so I guess going back to our, our original, usually we, we, we don't have a discussion back and forth here. We need to do it at the podium. So I, I believe if you, if you agree, if you want to take a minute and try to decide, if you want to have a spokesman, it, it would be helpful, and it's usually the standard of what we do here. So it's not trying, they're trying to cut you out of any time or anything else, but to hear the same comment over and over and over each time, it, you know, we, we get the point. But it, it's usually, and my history on this board, it's usually a lot more successful when, when you have a good spokesman come up and speak for you. But by no means do, are we handcuffed to either one, so.
Is there any feedback as to what you would like to do?
Commissioner Bloomfield?
Please.
So just, just once again, some word clarification. We, we give you guys five minutes to discuss with one another, and then you guys can appoint a couple of different spokespeople. And then in, in the past, I see some, some heads shaking still, that we still have had other people who still would like to make comments in addition to those couple of spokespeople. Okay, so it's just, what we're trying to do is avoid any repetition, but not for the, for the, the idea that we don't want to hear the repetition. You could just have a couple of spokespeople that said, hey, we have, this is the general consensus. But once again, if you still want to speak, we give that opportunity to do that. So if, if we want to take a five minutes to do that, you guys can discuss them.
Thank you, commissioners. I agree with that. Please. From all three of them? Because there's three, right, that are in effect? Folks, let's, let's do this. Let's take a five-minute break, and, and you guys can discuss among yourselves. And it, and if there is no consensus that there wants to be, then we'll just hear everyone, and that's okay. But we'll just take a five-minute break.
I think they need 10.
I'm thinking of just lying back. I'm not going to speak on behalf of anybody. I've said that the whole time.
Sir?
Sir.
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
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 Do you think there's a concern about...
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's a concern about...
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's a concern about...
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's a concern about...
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's a concern about...
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
Yeah.[789.29]
Do you think there's a concern about...
Yeah.
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 Previous commitment, prior commitment that started at eight o'clock and so he, he had to leave and step out. We still have quorum here, so we're, we're willing to move forward. We appreciate everyone who, who is, the way I understand it is that we have one person who wants to speak for Lago Estancia, then we have two people who want to speak for Candlewood. We'll go with, with 10 minutes each on those. And then if there's other new points that people want to express, we'd be happy to hear those at two minutes apiece. And, and we'll proceed in that order after we hear from the applicant. And we want to hear from Name and city of residence when you get up there.
Now I know all the secret passwords. My name's Adam Baugh, 25, 25 East Arizona, Biltmore Circle. I'm actually resident of the town of Gilbert. And I'm here on behalf of Craig Proudey and his development team. With me is our civil engineer, as well as our traffic engineer, as well as our planner on this case. And so, to the extent we can answer your questions, we will. And what we don't know, we'll go find answers for. We've shared that message all up throughout the process. I'm excited to be here. It's been a long process. I've been involved probably about since March. And I know the developer has been working on this for much longer than that. But there's two key important principles related to this development. Two key important principles. One is a general plan amendment, general plan land use map. And what does that mean? Developers should be able to rely upon that general plan amendment and general plan map. And the cities themselves adopt that to steer development in a certain pattern consistent with that map. The second thing I want to highlight here is infill development. Infill development has many challenges over time. The reason is usually it's pipe bypassed over because it either has weird funky geography, a small shape or size. Sometimes it has unusual topography. Sometimes there are just things like encumbrances or easements that affect its ability. And it's not unique to Gilbert. It's in a variety of jurisdictions across Arizona. These infill parcels get hopscotched and skipped over. And while development can occur within it and bypass it, they still stay here waiting for someone to solve those problems. And that's really what this case is about today. And that's why the town of Gilbert has always encouraged infill development, because somebody's finally willing to tackle what others have bypassed time and time again. And as part of that flexibility, they, as part of that encouragement, they encourage flexibility and creative solutions to solve it. Smart planning principles encourage infill redevelopment, and at times even rezoning and variances. While there are no variances associated with our case, sometimes you do need to look at the site a little different than the way it's been looked for the last 30 years. And finally, at the end of the day, when they encourage rezonings, or variances, or PADs, they try to figure out what's reasonable to make meaningful use of this property. And that's what I'm going to present before you today. I'd love to tell you a little bit about the history of this site, though. As you can see, this is the very essence of an infill property. We have development on all four sides, but for this vacant property here. It's best represented by its very odd, unusual shape. If you could see on a 3D rendering, you'd see a large depression on the south side, which is the retention basin today. Again, unusual topography creates infill conditions. And so until someone takes a stab at tackling very difficult issues, this property will likely remain vacant for much, much longer, perhaps forever. What we've learned, though, is there's a lot of history on this site, and I'd love to cover it a little bit with you briefly. This property was originally zoned in 1986, 32 years ago. At that time, it had a different residential category. Today, the town adopted a new code in 2005 that changed all those, the nomenclature and the names. Today, it's considered SF-7. That wasn't necessarily what it was given back in 1986, but SF-7 didn't necessarily exist back then either. And at the time, it was intended to be a school site on the north side and a retention basin on the south side, ideally to serve as a ball field, I believe, for that future school. That school was the bank, I, I really don't completely understand the full formalities, whether it was given by the developer to the school or taken during, from the bank to a school through maybe a foreclosure purpose. But all I know is that the school district received title this property from a bank. And the school then had it for 14 more years. It turned out that they didn't have a need or a capacity necessarily to build a school here. The growth patterns and trends in town of Gilbert were moving to a different direction. And as they realized where our best place to put our resources, it wasn't in a site here where there wasn't necessarily a demand any longer. Great Hearts had expressed some interest in building a facility here on this property as well. It was met with some difficulty. And as a result, Great Hearts decided that they didn't want to pursue any property here at this location. The church, meanwhile, had an interest in it. So before Great Hearts had come here, the church looked at this property and goes, you know, we actually want to build a daycare. We'd like to acquire a part of that property. But the school's position was acquire it all or acquire none. So they had to take all that property when they acquired it. And since then, the churches decided, what do we do with this property? They landscaped the retention basin, thought they could make a run at by leasing it to Little League teams and, and Pop Warner stuff, but they couldn't catch the revenue. And as a result, it's been an ongoing maintenance time and time again, for what is considered in some degree somewhat of a shrinking church membership. That is a problem that's been existed for them. They're not landowners, they're not developers, they're not land bankers. And so trying to find a meaningful use of the property is important to them. And they found someone's willing to step up. And at the time, in January of this year, a proposal was submitted and shared with the neighbors. I wasn't involved back then, but I understand it was for multifamily zoning for a condo development community. It was met with some resistance, rightfully so. I, I'm not sure that the neighborhood meeting, neighbor meeting was, was done accordingly. And I think the input from the neighbors was a bit surprising to developer. I got involved shortly thereafter and said, we need to understand this a little bit better. So we did another, two meetings in April, one for the north side of the community and one for the south side of the community to hear that feedback. And it was exactly what I've been told. And then we did another follow-up meeting in June, as well as several individual meetings since then. But let me kind of walk you through this property. Here was the plan that was presented back in January for 64 condo units, a minor general plan amendment, and multifamily zoning. This is what we heard. Apartments aren't appropriate in this area. How do we know? You're going to build the condos. Once you get the multifamily zoning, you can do anything else after that. It's too dense. You have access to the south. We don't want access to the south. You're going to take away our park. How are you going to provide for the drainage and retention? You don't even have enough guest parking. You're going to cause loss in our property values. Your homes are going to back up to our homes, and we're going to lose privacy. The church is going to lose a parking lot that's currently on the property today. And the only positive thing I heard was go build single-family homes. And so I said to the developer, if you think you're going to move forward with this case, I probably can't be associated with it. I don't think you'll be successful with an apartment zoning and condo development. And so we went back to drawing board and started visiting with different home builders to figure out if there was a design that could work, understanding that on an infill site like this, you're going to have a lot of issues to solve that unfortunately are costly. And so you need to leverage that out over a certain number of lots, which bumps up a certain degree of the density. That being said, it was key and important to us to stay within the range of the general plan category. The general plan for this area allows up to five homes per acre. So here was the plan that we changed. We did a pre-op in May of 2018. We came down to 60 single-family homes rather than 64 apartment units. We tried to maintain the park and retention as best as possible. We began to, to meet with individual stakeholders. We recognized that meeting with 100 and something people at a time is hard to find solutions. But we were able to identify a key person from the three surrounding communities that we could share ideas, get some feedback, and try to revise the plans as possible. I can't say I've convinced any of their minds, but I do think they've been effective advocates for their community in, in affecting change for this proposal. So we came in with June and held another neighbor meeting and showed them, we've come down now to 55 lots. We've removed the access to the south, so it's emergency only. We also have a primary access point on Madera Park, which is the same access point that was always intended when this was to be a school property. And we also relocated the parking lot that was previously used by the church to the south end of the, of the church property. Since that time, we would continue to work forward, both with the town staff and some of these key stakeholder folks. And what you see now is a plan down to 52 lots. I've set it into an aerial map so you can kind of get an idea on how it relates to its context and surrounding area. And there's some really important things here. First of all, it is consistent with the general plan. Two, there are landscape buffers on all four sides. We've deliberately removed any homes that could abut any adjacent property owner. We've kept that park and retention area. We've also made sure that it's going to be turf, so that it's not just rock and gravel, but usable space. We've maintained no access to Smoke Tree Road. We've also included a key pedestrian path movement that connects from the, oh boy, I guess I'll just describe it to you. From Candlewood to the south, through Lago Estancia to the east, and back up to Madera Park in the north. That's an existing pathway that's on the property today. As part of this process with key stakeholders, they've been able to steer us into certain conditions that they want to see adopted if this were to be approved. So in your staff report, you'll see some stipulations on there that talk about fence type, fence location, landscape plantings, open space areas, and pedestrian pathways, and no vehicular access. Those are key items that we've tried to implement and maintain. And that's the benefit of, of doing that stakeholder group. Even though I can't say I've convinced anybody necessarily to support the case, I can tell you that we have made significant changes, including adopting stipulations to best make this most compatible. Here's some product that you can see on the property. It's, the developer in this case actually has some product already in the town of Gilbert. Usually when I present a case, I can, I tell people, we haven't gone through that design reprocess yet. I don't know what it's going to look like. In this case, I've been, I can tell people, go walk these model homes. These aren't just renderings. These are actual model homes. They've been developed and designed in the town of Gilbert today. We've been able to tell people, go see it yourself. This product is understandably on a little bit smaller lots than what's around us. We have SF-7 around us today, but even those lots aren't even 7,000 square foot lots. Some of them are 5,000 range, some of them are 6,000 range. And so what you see here is a pattern of some densities that don't even comply with their own zoning district that surrounds them. We think we've got a great niche here. We've got a developer that's willing to build homes at the high 200s, up into the 300 range, which is remarkable. I ask you, where can you find housing like this affordable, brand new, in the town of Gilbert? It's hard to find unless it's some type of condo or town home living arrangement. So what we've done, in order to respond to those comments, we've converted what we thought were apartments in the beginning to single-family homes. We've removed the original proposal for multifamily low, which would have allowed up to 40 homes per acre. And we've changed it to an SFD category, 52 lots. What's key to that point is we did not want to push the envelope and request a general plan amendment. We are developing entirely consistent with that general plan category. We've eliminated any public access to Candlewood. We heard that loud and clear. I understand there's some folks in Madera Park who may be upset that our single point of access is coming from Madera Park, but there's a strategic reason that I'll cover a little bit later. This does meet all the drainage requirements. It accounts for both the Candlewood community, the Madera Park, and the church, and our own community. We had to be very careful in designing that. In no way can I get a case approved and platted by the town of Gilbert without proving I can meet the engineering. At the end of the day, we've maintained the park that's there today. It is smaller than the retention basin before, but it is sufficient to serve these areas. And keep in mind, this is an HOA park. Up until now, it's been private property maintained by the church. I see I have four seconds left, if this meter's accurate, but I'm actually probably towards the telling in my presentation anyways. I'll wrap up with just two or three more slides. Traffic was a concern. What I want to point out, though, that it was always intended and designed that this would be an access point for the school when it was intended in late 80s and early 90s. But what's most important here is a traffic impact analysis that was required by the town shows that the volumes we create are substantially low and won't have a significant impact on the surrounding roadway system. It's also worth pointing out, Madera Park is a collector street. The very nature of a collector street is to collect cars and convey them to our tier of streets. It's entirely different than a local residential, which is a street to the south, Smoke Tree. Local residential are much slower, homes front onto the street. You don't have a lot of cut-through traffic. Madera Park is not that type of a street. It's wider, it has bike lanes, has landscaping, and no homes directly front onto Madera Park. It is doing the exact thing it's designed for. We've also made sure that we provide sufficient guest parking. Whereas 16 spaces were proposed in the original proposal back in January, we now have 52 guests plus another six at the open space for a total of 58 guest parking spaces. What's been important, I think a comment relayed to us during this process, was how do you make sure that there's no spillover into the surrounding communities around you? And the town helped us understand that when we guest park it, we've got to assume it's trash and recyclable day, when both those canisters are out. And we also have to assume there's one guest per home all at the exact same time. It's sort of a perfect storm that would never happen, but nonetheless, we have to prove that we can meet that standard, and we approve that standard. Our property values, as I mentioned, are in the high 200s to the low 3s, probably even stretching beyond that depending on what floor plan amenities and options people select. That is very consistent with the sales, comparative sales market data that's right in those communities right next to us. Again, there is no concern about loss of privacy because we've pulled all our homes off of those property lines, many at a significant distance and creating a big landscape buffer that surrounds us. And we've also relocated what is the church parking lot that's on the property day to a different spot. So there's no, there's not necessarily a significant loss of parking or concern that those folks will be parking in the neighborhood. At the end of the day, I believe and submit to you this makes ideal sense. Staff recommends approval, and that's because they are your planning agency. They know when a project makes sense. They know that in this case, infill development is important. But they also know that they should encourage development that matches up with that general plan designation. We've taken deliberate efforts to revise our plan to maintain the open space, maintain landscape setbacks, buffers, improve, maintain privacy, provide cross connectivity among some of those adjacent neighborhoods. We have gone above and beyond to try to resolve concerns and address issues. We believe this is an appropriate plan for the town of Gilbert. And I'd be happy to reserve any comments or questions that I have on the backside, or answer any question you have now, or reserve a few minutes of rebuttal on the backside based on what comments could be shared by the community today.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. Are there any questions for the applicant? Senator Jones?
I'd like to reserve my questions till after the public speaks, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baugh. All right. I think we have a little bit of consensus, so we're going to move in this manner. Okay. We're going to, we're going to go ahead and ask Alan Kranzberg to come up. Please give us your name and city of, town of residence, and speak to us for 10 minutes, please. Or less.
Thank you. Vice Commissioner, Commissioners, I'll try and be more brief than 10 minutes. My name is Alan Kranzberg. I'm a Gilbert resident, 590. My name is Alan Kranzberg. I'm a Town of Gilbert resident, 595 South Neely Street. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here today as a resident. However, I am the Lago Estancia HOA Board President. It's a 713-home community just east of the proposed development. I will say that I do support Mr. Craig Proudey, the developer, in his desire to build a development that he can be proud of now and in the future. So why am I against the zoning change? And why did my board vote unanimously against the zoning change? Well, for different reasons. And for that reason, I'm here as an individual homeowner, but I will represent other members of my community as best I can. We talked about water retention. And so without a fully vetted water retention plan, as an HOA Board President, if this was in front of me, I would have to postpone approval. So I would encourage you to postpone approval of a zoning change until we have a fully vetted water retention plan. With that being said, the developer has a water retention plan. And I believe that with an HOA community, it has a better chance of being maintained properly. However, there's that element of doubt, because it hasn't been fully vetted Another reason I'm against the zoning change is because I would like to see lot sizes more commensurate with the surrounding community. And in order to do that, in order to be able to have larger lot sizes, but still be able to mitigate the cost of the infrastructure, having an HOA is difficult. And I would like to say that even though it's outside of your purview, it would be ideal to consider, for an infill project like this, to make it part of an existing PKID like Madera Park. I appreciate the, the work that the town staff has done in their review and analysis. But in terms of long-term health and viability, the HOA needs to be considered. And this is going to be a 52-home HOA. I have some experience on HOAs, like yourselves. I'm a volunteer, like yourselves. I find myself in meetings sometimes that go past 8:00 PM. So in my community, as Adam talked about, we have homes that are smaller than SF-7. As a matter of fact, we have homes a little less than 5,000 square feet, and others that are close to 15,000 square feet, lot sizes. I'm sorry, not home sizes, lot sizes. And in our smaller lots, we have a problem where sometimes we have people that store everything but their vehicles in the garage, and you have a full-size truck. And in our community, we have public streets, we have public sidewalks, and in some cases, and I don't want town code enforcement to come visit my HOA, but in some cases, we do have some trucks that cannot fit in the driveway without extending and encroaching onto the public sidewalk. I don't know what the home sites are going to be on 3,200 square foot lots. I'm talking about a little under 5,000, we have some issues. So the PAD doesn't specify what it's going to look like, but I have some concerns. I spoke to the president of Tri-City Property Management. They manage my community along with 90 others in the Phoenix metro area, Tucson, and Prescott. Jean Marie Bellington, who's the president of Tri-City Property Management, and was in business in the 1980s when communities like mine were being constructed. She felt like, in this community, a 52-home HOA wouldn't necessarily be successful in the long term. So let's talk about water retention. I have a bid that I'll be discussing at my meeting tomorrow for $2,400 to maintain one dry well and the culverts that feed it. I have 713 homes. I have adequate reserves, no problem. With a 52-home community, bigger problem. I have a community manager with over 20 years' experience, including experience working for a developer. She also urged strong caution, because she knows that besides the fact that there's some state laws that have oversight over HOAs, the local communities' planning commissions don't really look at the long-term viability of an HOA. So in summary, because I think there should be more flexibility for a developer like Mr. Proudey to maybe come in and say, this doesn't have to be part of an HOA, maybe we could make it part of the PKID. You know, I believe he's genuine. I believe he really does want to build a community that he can be proud of in the future, but he doesn't necessarily have as many options. So I'd like the town, the planning commission, to consider more options for an infill project like this. My community has Sunrise Senior Living on one side. It has Belazona Wellness Center, which was approved. You may remember it. Sunrise Senior Living is, I believe, 150 units. Belazona Wellness Center, which I believe will be rehab and nursing, has 87 units. And you haven't seen me here before speaking in front of the community, or excuse me, in front of the commission, because our community was able to work out our concerns. And we do have bordering communities that are much higher density. They're along Gilbert Road. I don't believe that the zoning change is appropriate. And I've given you my reasons why, and I would appreciate your consideration. And if for no other reason, I would appreciate you holding off on making a recommendation until water retention is fully vetted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kranzberg. Appreciate that. Next, we have Veronica Ross, speaking for the Candlewood HOA.
Hi, I'm Veronica Ross. I'm the, I live in Candlewood, 641 West Sagebrush, Gilbert. Alan did a wonderful job. I'm really not sure what I can add to that. He hit all of the major points. Our, our major point, we had three that we had worked with the developer. We had wanted for there to be no access along Smoke Tree Road and for the fence, the current fence line to remain the same. We have local residential streets on our side with homes facing the road. We had asked for a decrease in the density, particularly in the retention basin because of our fear of flooding. I've lived there for 30 years, and there's a, it's approximately a four-acre retention basin. And in that course of 30 years, I've seen that basin completely filled to the point to where kids have boogie boarded and boated on it. And that's with dry wells. So just this past last month, we've had an unusual amount of rain, but it's not been particularly monsoon deluge. And that retention basin is still wet. You practically need a can of rage to walk past this site. So without seeing the report, an engineering report, and studies done on how this new development is going to handle our storm and water runoff, there is no way that the Candlewood HOA can support this zoning change. Let me see my other notes, because people were telling me what to say now. Alan touched on the long-term viability, and I've been the HOA president for my community since 1992. It's a, you know, you got to die. And then I'm sure they'll try to pass it to one of my kids. But in the course of that time, we only have 136 homes. And in those homes, we've had a really good board over the years. We've had a very frugal board. We've had a good property management company. We've been able to put money away. We've banked it. We've put our CDs in. Alls we maintain are the sidewalks around our properties, the landscape around that. I fear for 52 homes coming in that are going to maintain private streets, the landscaping around those streets, a tot lot, the streetlights, and a retention basin that is going to be able to handle all of the water that this four-acre lot now retains. We've had this view and this park here, basically, which was donated to the Gilbert Public Schools by Continental Homes, to be used as an amenity and a water retention basin for the Candlewood HOA. So this is a tough pill for us to take. So I think Alan covered a lot of it, and you're going to hear some more from some other people on some other issues. But I, I would ask that until we've gotten all of the information, we can't, we can't support this project. The density's too, too much. There's too many homes and a, being built on an existing retention pond. So I, I would just like for you to take that in consideration until we can see some numbers and somebody can do some math on this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. We appreciate that. Well done. What's that?
There's six minutes left. You could give that to someone else.
We're going to ask Mr. Mike Van, Vanek to come up and take some of that six minutes. Oh, boy. Show and tell, this is awesome.
All right. So I don't want to just, you know, I know not everyone can see the handouts. I just didn't know. I didn't, I didn't know if we'd have a, an opportunity to display some of this. So I don't want to just reread, you know, what I, what I sent in to you. But I think the major thing I just want to point out as part of the Candlewood Homeowners Association.
Excuse me. Could I please ask you to give us your name again?
Mike Vanek at 724 West Smoke Tree Road. And just wanted to kind of, we are trying to group together three communities, which, you know, are, in our opinion, negatively affected by the new development. And basically just say, we all object to the rezoning. So of all the meetings I've been going to since January 30th, we've talked to hundreds of different households and homeowners of the three adjacent neighborhoods. And everybody, without question, has objected to rezoning. So when Adam went- So when Adam went through, you know, some of the, some of the feedback, the community feedback, all of that, a few slides in, still stands, I think they were just missing the point. We didn't say, "Go build single-family houses, we don't want apartments." We were just saying, "Keep the integrity of the master plan and the general plan and keep it SF-7 zoning." That's what we're all united to here to say. What happens with that? You know, it's up to the free markets, I guess. The church owns the land, and if they want to maintain it, or lease it, or sell it to someone else, they can, but we just ask that you keep the zoning the same. So the only argument I'd basically add is that the second attachment goes into some rough math around how I disagree this complies with the general plan. And it's just a matter of perspective, but whether the church owns that land, the school district owned that land, they had to keep certain parameters around the plat of the retention basin to handle a 50-year flood. So everyone's got to kind of handle that. So if you develop around it, I basically just carved out, per their drawings, how much approximately acreage would be kept for the retention bases, and that's like 1.72 acres. And for Commissioner Johns, I think you had an original question, right when we were just getting into this, about kind of dwelling units per acre, and is it going to be the same, and how many? And if we exclude the retention basin, which we can't really just build on, then we have basically 8.74 acres. So then we have 52 units divided into the 8.7, and we have a 5.95 dwelling units per acre, which I think would be above the 3.5 to 5.0 that we have. So that's one thing I just want to have people consider. Beyond that, I took the liberty of filming a video, which I can't really show, and it was just October 2nd, I remember the day. It probably rained in our community for about, I don't know, 12 hours. It was a heavy rain. And I went through and I took a video of a retention pond, which serves a good purpose, and it did what I thought it would, and it filled up with water. And I basically documented where some of the water was up until about Dodge Street, which is in the top, hard to point out on this, but there's a little, on the south side of the, the bottom of it, Dodge Street goes, goes south, and it's the east part of the retention basin. And that's where I showed you on the, on the first attachment, that the floodwater that day on the, the second, went well into where they planned to develop houses there. And beyond that, I think Ronnie and Allen did a good job, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vanek. Appreciate that. Thank you for the exhibits, too. That's, that's helpful. All right. I'm going to go through the rest of these. If anyone else would like to speak and add a new point or something, then feel free. You will have two minutes to speak. If you, if you wish to waive it off, just let me know that, too. Janet Davis says, "I'm opposed and I wish to speak." Do you still wish to speak, Janet? I have two minutes.
I'm Janet Davis, and I'm sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, so I don't really have anything prepared. I'm at 662 West Burr Avenue, Gilbert, and I'm in the Madera Park Division. And I have a lot of concerns about the traffic. And I understand when they're talking about houses facing the streets, and we have Madera Park that's, doesn't have the houses. But there's a lot of traffic on there already, and the two main exits are on either end of Madera Park Drive. And to take, to go south on Cooper, it's, it's hard now to get, to take a left. I mean, you can sit there for four or five minutes waiting, because there'll be four or five cars ahead of you. And then they, I know they've talked about, maybe we could get a light or something, but I think the traffic would just back up, and there's, and it would start blocking the streets to get out onto Madera Park. And the place that this new community would come out on Madera Park is on a curve. And as it is, if you're going out down Mesquite and trying to get out on Madera Park, you'll look and it's clear, and start to, start to take a left, and there'll be someone just come right up on you because the, the traffic's pretty, some, some people drive pretty fast around there, and you don't have time to react as much. And I think more and more traffic, it, it'll be harder to get out just within our community. I understand that Elliott and Cooper can probably handle the extra. I'm just concerned on Madera Park Drive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. I have William Fisher, says he's opposed and wishes to speak. Do you still wish to speak, William? Sir? Okay. No new points? We're good? Thank you. Have Kim, Kim Mihas? Okay. Kim, do you wish to speak? Do you have a, okay, please. For the podium, say your name, and, and you don't need to give your address, just your town of residence.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Mahalas. I live in Madera Park. I've been there, been there for about a year and a half. My concern is the traffic, and I appreciate what this nice lady said, but it's also the traffic on Cooper, and it's also getting to and from work. So I have to go to the 60 or whatever to get up that way. Every morning at 7:45, when you go to leave Madera Park, there's a line of five cars at least, and as soon as you are able to turn right, the traffic from Elliott's all the way backed up to where that church is, which is almost halfway in between there and Warner. So my concern is, is I'm already driving through other neighborhoods to get to my neighborhood, because the traffic is so bad. And then, a very valid point around that curve, if you're coming southbound on Madera Park from Elliott, and I need to turn on Rahide, where they put the sign up, when you go to turn left, it's, it's a blind spot. You can't see people coming and going, especially at night, or people walking, and it's very unsafe. So to think to add 52 more houses into a neighborhood that's already too congested, I don't know if there was a consensus done on how many people actually live in Madera Park and drive cars, but I've got to tell you, I'm a person of one, but every buddy on my block has three to four cars plus a toy. So the fact that all these people are coming and going, and we think it's okay to add a minimum, let's just say 100, 100 cars, right? Two per household? I'm just guessing. At that price range, you would have two people in the house? That's another extra 100 cars, plus their guests, plus their kids, plus this, plus that. It's too much. It really needs to go somewhere else. And I really hope you take that into consideration about the people who live there, why they live there, and the community that we have, to have to bring in another community that negatively affects three communities in the neighborhood via that water and via traffic. That should be enough, to not rezone. Thank you.
Have Debbie Fisher, Deborah Fisher? Okay, thank you. Have Robert Peckham, is that right? Opposed and wishes to speak.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and I want to just point out a few things, that tremendous unity here. These 23 people filled out the yellow form wishing to speak or registered their opposition from three very different neighborhoods, those with HOAs like Lago Estancia and Candlewood, and those of us who live in Madera Park. Again, I realize I might not have identified myself, Robert Peckham, in Madera Park, 713 West Silver Creek Road. We've really touched on several key points. I was so appreciative of Mr. Vanek really looking and doing the research, crunching the numbers for us, even on October 2nd, measuring where the water was. Those of us who do live nearby really look at their plan and go, "This can't possibly work in terms of retaining the water properly." Others have pleaded with you as well and said, "There must be a research into what would happen in another monsoon rain." We believe it could be very dangerous, disastrous for the new 52 homeowners, as well as especially those in Candlewood. So please, consider that, that this is not just superfluous. It really is for those of us who've seen regularly the effect of rain is there, there. Secondly, the traffic as well. I appreciate those who've spoken about the problem of Madera Park Road, and also of Cooper as well. Just a reminder, when the Cooper and Guadalupe was reconstructed, the effect on traffic was just horrible. When Weinberger was opened as well, and it's been a very good, successful business as well, many more heavy trucks going up and down, and others who are processing their waste there. So the traffic on Cooper has gotten unsustainable, and I believe that Cooper and Elliott is going to be reconstructed as well soon. And so to consider adding 52 more homes into an area that we already experience as too congested seems going over the top. It was presented that an infill is an inevitability, that we must do it, that there should be no infills in Gilbert. I have to ask, why? Why not? Why not leave some open space? Why not comply with the zoning that we already have of SF-7, so that if it is developed, that it be developed with larger lots, and therefore fewer homes, less traffic, and more fitting in with three neighborhoods where we love to live already? We love our town of Gilbert, and we plead with you that you would allow it to continue, similar to what it is now. Thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you. I have a Susan Stewart that is opposed and wishes to speak. Do you still have anything new that you would like to say? Okay. Thank you. Oh, we take that to be the case. I, I didn't think that Adam had done such a great job that he had turned you on on this one. He is a nice man, he is. All right. We have a Sarah Vanek, is that right? That is opposed and wishes to speak, but no longer? If you, if you need to add something, you'll need to come up and speak. Still opposed. Very good. All right. Michael Umberger, is opposed and wishes to speak. Michael, do you still wish to speak? Can't resist, can you?
My name is Michael Umberger, Gilbert, Arizona, Candlewood subdivision. I just want to point out that there are some privacy concerns for some in Candlewood. There's a different elevation to the two parcels, basically. There's a, probably a good eight-foot difference in height on the, the Madera Park side to where the retention basin is. You can stand, I'm, happen to be in the house right on the, the catty corner there of where they can, basically on the church side, you could stand there and look straight into my house, into my backyard. Now, the plan is to put a, basically right there. Now, to put a two-story house there, it's going to tower over the homes that are on this side of, in the Candlewood division. Let me just, ugh. So you know what homes I'm talking about? Is these homes here are all at an elevation down in the retention basin elevation, where it's basically right here, you have a ramp up and live up here. Stand up here and look down into our home. And just adding these small, tall homes.
Michael, you need to come back to the microphone, please.
I apologize.
You have lost your way.
I have.
And you've lost all of us, too.
I know.
But let's get you a pointer.
This wasn't as quick as I thought.
Let's give you a pointer. We'll give you all of the tools.
All right. So basically, you have a difference in elevation right here. My concern is, right now already, is you can look into these homes here, just standing there, just standing there, you can look down into our yards. Add a two-story home to that same location, and you're really, I mean, you're going to be able to see a foot over my fence, basically, you know? Instead of seeing my back door, you're going to be able to see my yard with a six-foot fence up. So it's, it's one of those things where you do have an elevation issue, there is a privacy issue, there is one there now. It's just adding a two-story house really, you know, exaggerates the situation in that regard.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. That's something that we wouldn't have picked up on. Appreciate that. Anything else?
That's really it. Traffic-wise, Madera, it's, it's a nightmare.
Okay.
Thankfully, we don't deal with it, but just to support them, they have two exits. I mean, they don't have anywhere near enough now to effectively get their traffic out. Adding this is really going to make it a jam in that community.
Okay. Thank you.
But, thank you.
Have a John Weber, who wishes to speak and is opposed? Two minutes.
Yeah, my name is John Weber, we live in Madera Park. First of all, during the previous meetings at the church, the signs that were posted alerting the communities of these meetings, one was facing, one was right here, facing Madera Park. So the whole community actually saw when the meetings were. Now that the important meetings are here for the zoning and the city council meetings, the sign is right over here, on Rahide. So the whole community doesn't see the sign. In, in, yeah, in Candlewood, too. They put the sign right here, facing Smoke Tree and Quail, but now the new sign facing, is like over here somewhere, facing just Smoke Tree. So this is why we don't, we have a 447-home community in Madera Park, and we have such a small fraction here, as opposed to what showed up at the church meetings, because nobody knew about this. Except for the people walking by, and the people on Rahide, where I live. To put some numbers in perspective, like I said, 447 homes in Madera Park that are primarily using two exits. We have a small Silver Creek exit that maybe serves 50 homes. That still leaves about almost 200 homes per exit. And I know Candlewood and Lago Estancia is well represented by HOAs, but we're not. And so we have 200 homes per exit for, onto Cooper and Elliott. Candlewood has two exits, one onto Candlewood Lane and one onto Cooper. And they have, only have 136 homes, as she said. And so, let's say, maybe 25, 30 of them use Candlewood Lane, and probably the rest go to Cooper. You know, but you, if you add 52 homes to ours already, we're going to be at like 250, 252 exiting onto Madera Park, onto Cooper from Madera Park. If this was closed for an emergency exit only, and opened it up here, this would only produce maybe 150 in that exit. So the reason, because Lago and Candlewood have, you know, some strong HOAs and talked to the developer and stuff, they shut off the Candle, the Smoke Tree exit, and dumped everything into, into Madera Park, who's already over-congested with traffic. I mean, we have four cars at our house, two, I have two teenage drivers and two adult drivers, and up and down our streets, there's multiple cars. So, I mean, just, it's ridiculous amount of traffic that we have to deal with on Madera Park. And to put that exit, wherever the button is, to put that exit right here, right after this curve, everybody's going to be taking a left. Most people will be taking a left to get onto Cooper here. And taking a left from this southbound, these people travel southbound right here, and, you know, it's just, you're asking for accidents and trouble. So putting that, that community, dumping it into our, into Madera Park is just unreasonable.
Okay. Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you, John. Have John Naas Navis? Okay. Opposed and still wishing to speak?
John Navis, I live in Madera Park. The northern half of this project doesn't belong to the PKID, because it would first belong to the, the school, which was exempt, and then to the church. Our PKID maintains all landscaping along Madera Park Drive and all landscaping in front of, on Cooper Road. We pay the town. By them trying to combine the two and take it out of our, they're trying to take this exempt status that they have, because it was a church property, and now they're going to dump onto Madera Park, but not contribute to our PKID. So we will still have to maintain all the landscaping up and down Madera Park Drive and all, everything around Madera Park, while they will have the same access to us, but not pay into it. So I'm trying to figure out, how is that possible? How do, how do we? And then the developer talked about how the school was always designed to come out onto Madera Park, but that entrance is already taken by the church, because the church comes out, has an exit onto Madera Park further up. So now, the church took a back entrance. So now the church took a back entrance and that, they're trying to say is that when it was originally designed for a school, those two entrances would have been enough, would have been enough to handle the same amount of traffic now with 52 homes being built, 100 and something new cars. Whereas we know a school would only have traffic a certain number of times, certain periods of time during the day. It's not the same as having homes there with traffic constantly emptying out onto those roads. We have the entrance to the church further up closer to Cooper and if there was a school, there probably would have been an entrance onto Cooper, which the church has. So I'm trying to figure out, how do we, how do we increase the area draining onto Madera Park that we as homeowners of Madera Park have to pay for the maintenance of those areas of all the landscaping around here, but they don't? If they're not part of, if they're not part of Madera Park? So that would be my question. How do we justify more people coming onto the street that we have to maintain but don't have, that they don't have to?
A fair question. Thank you. Okay. Going through the rest of these, I have Chad Janz that is opposed. Didn't, didn't mark anything else. I'm assuming we're okay to not speak? Okay. And Karen Friedel? Oh, you would like to speak? Okay. We'll give you 30 seconds. No, I'm just kidding you.
Karen Friedel, Madera Park. I did have a question for the developer. Are the walls communal on these single-family homes?
And he'll answer when he comes back up.
Okay. And I did not see any yards at all, which indicates to me they're not single-family homes and they are not compliant with the integrity of our neighborhood. And I think that's the biggest problem that we all have here is that they're going to put a little slum in the middle of a beautiful neighborhood. We bought into this neighborhood because of the integrity and the open spaces and the fact that everyone had a yard. I've seen their product in, I've seen their product in Gilbert. It is nothing like our homes. There was a question about square footage. They're planning on building 3,000-square-foot lots. There are 43,560 square feet in an acre. That's 14.52 houses per acre. Right now, in Madera Park, we have 6.22 houses per acre. So you can see where we would be opposed to this zoning change. Would you want something like this in your neighborhood? Would you? No. I also have a question about what happened to the other commissioners? Did they just go home?
No, the other commissioner had a prior commitment.
Okay.
And Brian, Brian, because he was, he was, he had a conflict of interest and so he had to step away from the.
So he's part of this project?
He is not. He was, when it was a multifamily, he was the architect that was, that was hired to take a look at it. And so for that, he's no longer involved in the project, but he felt like it was best to recuse himself and be still here. He's still out in the foyer, but he's not, he's not going to vote and be a part of it.
Well, you can see from the turnout here that we all have pretty strong feelings about a zoning change for a project that none of us are in favor of. So I'm asking you not to give them their zoning change and not to allow them to move forward with this project. We sat and talked with them several times. We told them that if the project was within the same integrity as the rest of the community, that we would support their project.
Your time is up, so wrap it up.
I don't think it's profitable for them. We cannot support their project and we're hoping you won't either. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Alvin Roscoe is opposed. And is opposed. Okay. And Jean McQuiller is opposed. Okay. And Christina Umberger is opposed. And we have several others here that we want to read into the, into the minutes. Janet Davis is opposed and does not wish to speak. Ed Colvistet? Ed is opposed. And David Olson is opposed and does not wish to speak. Michael, Michael Umberger is opposed and does not wish to speak. Oh, they chose to not speak. Oh, but you had your time. If we need to, if you have something very urgent to say, we'll, we'll see. Just give me a second here. John Steinaker, thank you, is opposed and does not wish to speak. Okay. We've, we've gone through all of the public. Thank you for coming out tonight and sharing with us your thoughts. We do appreciate you coming out and giving us your perspective because you are the neighbors who see this and see the area. We do appreciate that and coming here. However, now we need to give the time back to Adam Bah. You have five minutes to answer any comments and concerns that you heard come up.
Thank you. I appreciate deliberation and for the feedback from the neighbors. It's rare to work on a case this long, know that you have opposition the entire time and still receive a hug before you walk in this hearing room today. It's interesting to work with Veronica and Geffen and Alan, for that matter, on three different communities that surround us. Find ways to incorporate plan changes even though you know you're going to get beat up by them anyways. But you do that because I think that's part of trying to be responsive development, trying to find solutions even when you know you're going to still be opposed, but also recognizing that if this were to be approved, that it be approved in a manner that's most compatible as possible. So I appreciate the work that they've been done. I think they've been very, very effective advocates on behalf of their community. The one thing that we've done is beyond just mailing out the required 300-foot million radius, anytime someone came to our neighbor meeting, and we've had four, we've always added that name onto our mailing list. So our mailing list has grown and grown with each neighbor meeting. In particular, whenever we've had an update, we've shared that with these three key stakeholders and asked them to publicize that through their community as well. And there's some Marvel new apps called Next Door where the message can get broadcast even further than what the notice requirement reaches. So while we've made tremendous changes and we've worked closely with them to at least help get the word out, even though we knew that we were going to still face some opposition on this project, let me answer some of these questions one by one. I told you I would do my best to answer them. So I'll start with the first one, which is retention. As this body knows, a zoning case is simply a color and a change in a land use on a map. Plating goes preliminary plat, then final plat, which occur post-zoning. That's when you determine that you can engineer a site. And if you can't engineer it, you cannot build it. We've taken some preventative steps and in this case, we have engineered the site, knowing that that's a necessary component later on, knowing that it's a concern still today. So as a result, we can prove that we satisfy the engineering requirements. We've given that to staff and we just sent it to them this morning. Again, that's not required until after zoning, which wouldn't be until January at this point. So 60 days earlier than normal, we've provided that to staff. Not only do we meet the required engineering, we slightly exceed it. I'm very confident in that answer and I think planning staff, the development review and professional staff will be able to verify that before this goes to council. There's no need to delay a case because it's not required at this time and clearly there's an opportunity for staff to review that before council and next month. There was a comment about an HOA and a PKID. PKID is very unique to Gilbert. Long time ago, the town built parks in communities and was maintaining those parks even though they were being used exclusively for the residents in that area. So the town said, you know what? If there's a park in your community, you should help pay for that park maintenance. And those PKIDs were formed in very older communities. Nowadays, you have HOAs. It's part of the requirement in the town of Gilbert, you actually have to build your own park. That park is maintained by your own HOA rather than the town maintain it. So in our case, a PKID, quite frankly, isn't necessary because we have our own park rather than need to use a neighbor's park. Our own dues, monthly paid or quarterly, depending on the arrangement, will also go towards maintenance of that park. We hope that park is used by the residents that surround us. I hope that Tommy in the community of the north plays a Jimmy in our community and vice versa. I hope these cross-connectivity pathways encourage neighborhood, neighborhood activity. I hope the kids in our park play in their park and vice versa. But I can tell you that we have an obligation to maintain the existing frontage along Madera Park for our property, just like the church has their obligation to maintain their part of that frontage as well. Candlewood, let's talk about Madera Park traffic. I'm going to spend too much time flipping between slides. I'll just cut right to it. In fact, Andrew here from Southwest Traffic Engineering can answer some of these questions as well, but let's not lose, let's lose, let's not lose focus on the fact that this was designed to be a school originally, a school that creates a lot more trips daily, particularly during the morning time, the afternoon time, at its greatest peak intensity, far greater than what this small, little community would create. More important, let's not forget, this is a collector road designed exactly for this purpose. A collector road can convey up to 15,000 cars of volume. That's what they're designed for. We're talking about in our peak time in the morning, a seven to nine AM window, 40-something trips. That's it. That's all we create. In the afternoon, 50-something trips. That's a very, 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 very low insignificant number of trips created by the subdivision. It doesn't even come close to tripping the volume that would be allowed under this road. And so it, it's important to put that into context. There's something like 4,200 trips on Madera Park today. In our peak time, we're talking about 40? In our, in our PM peak time, about 50-something? It's not, it's not, in no way does it trip over that balance. And in fact, the town's own traffic engineers reviewed it and doesn't even think it warrants the need for a traffic signal. If once required, we would participate it, but it doesn't trigger that necessity of that study. It's also important to point out that there was a comment from Michael about privacy concerns. He was the gentleman that lived, I believe, in this, this home right around here. It's important to note, we don't have any homes at a butt next to him. Our closest rear wall is 55 feet from his house. So if there's a two-story home, and there are two-story homes right now in Candlewood, right there along our same border, that, our two-story home would be significantly set back away from that area. It's also important to point out that we've been strategic in making sure no home abuts any adjacent property on it today. So there was a comment about our sign and where it was located. We didn't choose where the sign goes. That was actually a map given to us from the town of Gilbert that indicated where those signs are supposed to be. We put those signs where the town told us to put them. One is right here and one is just right down there. That's exactly where the signs are supposed to be. That's maximum visibility. We didn't get to choose or pick where they go. There was a comment that nobody knew about this proposal except for the many people that heard about it through the Next Door app. I know the neighbors circulated a petition. A number of people signed that petition. I think there was 83 signatures on there. Interestingly, along those signatures, there's only 59 homes in Candlewood. So there were some people that signed it multiple times and there's other people whose husband and wife signed it. But someone's been out communicating the message in addition to the four neighbor meetings we did, plus the individual small stakeholder groups. This isn't one of those situations where people didn't know what was happening. We've done more than what's required for notice and mailing. So let's talk about Smoke Tree. Why, why didn't we put access onto Smoke Tree? Well, quite frankly, we were asked not to put it on there. But that's when we learned that Smoke Tree is not the same thing as a collector. And the volumes that go on a local residential are entirely different and those roadways are designed entirely different than a collector street. This is fully appropriate to be on a collector street. That's what it's designed for, for far more greater capacity than what we have today. I think there was a comment about are our walls communal? I'm not sure what she means by that comment, but I can tell you that our walls are no different than any other single-family subdivision that's approved by the town of Gilbert. Exactly the same in all those measures. And we do have private rear yards. Our yards are about 10 to 14, 15 feet deep. These are not the same size of yards as some of the homes that surround us, but this is a, a unique project. It requires a little bit of creativity, given the infill nature of the site and given the constraints that you have. In order to make this work feasibly, reasonably and appropriately, we're bringing in a product that's at a price point that you just can't find in Gilbert. Think of what you just approved last month at Val Vista and Ray, a project at the corner of a major, major arterial intersection next to homes that are zoned SF8 or, or greater than what we have right here. Yet on that project, at that area, you could, you guys approved lots at 2,000 square foot apiece. In this case, we have lots that are 3,200 square feet next to lots who are around us at, in the 5,000 square foot range. So this isn't a very drastic departure than what's already present in that area. I appreciate some of the comments that Ms. Ross gave. I was welcomed her home. She could have told me, I don't want to work with you. She could have told me, this proposal is so offensive, we're not going to talk to you. But instead she said, I'm still going to oppose you, but here are some key things I want you to do. And so let me point that out. No access to the south, we accommodated. Keep the fence lines where they are on all the sides, we accommodated. I even heard, put your landscaping on the outside of the fence for the benefit of the adjacent neighbors rather than the inside of the fence for the benefit of your own community. So we've done that. We've been told to even design certain fence lakes with solid walls, certain fence lakes with open walls, certain fence lakes with partial solid and open walls. We've done all those things. We've been told, maintain the pedestrian connectivity, but don't put any vehicular connectivity at Hackamore Highway. Those are things we've done. I can't say that, I can tell you that, yes, I, I haven't been able to reduce my density much lower than 52 because I need that density to make this project work. But everything else, we've done. So why would you deny this? Well, because the general plan isn't consistent? No, we are consistent. Is it because people are losing privacy around us? We have no homes at a butt to them. Is it because we don't meet the required retention and drainage? We actually satisfy that standard. Is it because the traffic? Our traffic is so low that it's far below what this roadway could convey. Is it because the property values are too low and they're going to affect the rest of the neighbors? We're developing these properties and selling for the exact same price range that's already present in this area. When I think about all the reasons why somebody's made an allegation to deny it, I've actually shown that it makes good sense what we've done to try to accomplish it. I know from time and time again, working at the town of Gilbert, that many new cases understandably create opposition. Sometimes the status quo changes. I think the church has been a good neighbor to create a park area that's let the residents use it at their own will. But at this point, the church isn't a landholder, excuse me, isn't a land banker, isn't a developer. With a dwindling membership, they need to find a way to make meaningful use of this property. This is a great opportunity and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Oh, you're done? Oh, that's a good time. Good. Okay. All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? Or any questions for members of the, of the community? Or staff? Okay.
So, yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions for the applicant and maybe staff can fill in. And I kind of want to hear from the, you said you have a traffic engineer here? So, yeah, I would like to probably hear from the traffic engineer too, but I'll go in order. So one, there was a lot of concern about the retention. I heard that over and over and over again. But then I heard that the applicant has put together a civil engineering plan and has accommodated for the water retention inside that area. Let's pull this closer. I heard that, no one can hear me. Has, was this site originally even designed or has, was it kind of put together for the school? Is this a designed retention at this moment? Because, you know, I saw a map where it kind of went all over the place. And I know a lot of times they put a temporary retention basin in or it hasn't been maintained and that's going to lead to another question. So I'll let you go ahead and answer.
Very astute questions. Let me pull up this slide. I think I forgot to point to, and I think this will help answer some of your questions. There's four boxes that are circled on the bottom. One shows the requirement, one shows provided, one shows the requirement, one shows provided. You can see that we satisfy that standard. But I want to point out that when Candlewood and Madera Park were designed, it was 1986, 1987, 1988. The engineering standards back then are totally different than today. And so while there may be some apparent flaws in the design today, no one's, they're not required to change that. That was the general, the grading drainage plan was adopted 30-something years ago. Today's standard is much more onerous. Not only do we have to provide for those same communities, but for our own as well. So to answer your question, I don't know why it was designed the way it was other than that was required. But we all know that you can readjust basins, you can readjust forums and grading to accommodate that requirement as it exists in 2018, not as it was in 1988. With me here is Dave Saltisick. He's been involved in this product from the beginning. He's engineered this thing completely and he's studied those, the 87 Madera Park grading plan, the 88 Candlewood plan. He's read through it better than I have and we can answer any of those questions that you may have beyond that. I will say that they're right, there is some ponding on Smoke Tree Road. That's how it was designed to be. It was designed to pond and push forward to Cooper. There's an outlet right there. That's how it was designed. I don't think it was a good design, but that was a design in 1988. In our case, the retention basin that we will create will solve a lot of those concerns.
But it has been designed and they're working on that.
As of now.
And then there's also questions, and let me find the first gentleman that went up there. He talks about bedded. He kept mentioning about bedded. He kept mentioning about bedded. So I'm assuming that he's talking about the cost of the retention basins and things. At this point right now, it just seems odd to me that the church has been picking up the cost of the retention basin for the neighborhood. Do they get any kind of money, or do they get any kind of compensation for the retention basin on their property from surrounding neighborhoods?
They do not. Now, what's interesting, I think Veronica Ross has been helpful to kind of steer me into this direction a little bit. When that retention area in that school site was created, there was an expectation that that area be landscaped and have some type of retention to serve Candlewood to the south. When the church, when the school acquired that property, they knew that understanding. When the church acquired that property, they also knew that understanding. But it doesn't say how, what form, what quantity, and what manner. But we do know, we cannot develop this without providing for that required retention. And landscaping within that retention area, it doesn't have to be turf. It could be rock and some low-lying shrubs. But we do know that we have to, and we've done that with this proposal.
So nothing's received from the surrounding neighborhoods to help maintain? Is there any, any kind of wells in there right now? Drywells at this point?
There are some wells in there today. They received some funding a few years, as part of that discussion in the 1980s from the developer, about 21,000 or something in change.
Have they been maintained up to this point?
I don't believe they've been maintained.
That could be part of the reason why.
I believe so.
So, the single civil engineer.
Speaking my language.
And I'm just going through my list, and since you're back up. So, there was also questions about the cost of the landscaping that's surrounding, and you didn't really touch on that. Is the landscaping that's adjacent to this property going to be taken over by this development? Or is that something that the HOA is neighboring? Are they taking care of the landscaping that you adjacent, have adjacent to the street?
So the developer, like in any subdivision, the developer has an obligation to maintain the landscaping along its frontage. And sometimes, when there's a median in the middle of the road, the developer has an obligation to maintain that median landscape. It doesn't exist here, but for the frontage along our property, along Madera Park, yes.
So your HOA will be taking it over from their HOA?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, I'd love to see the PKID assessments. I'd love to see the PKID assessments along that area, and to see if actually that linear length of our frontage along Madera Park might already be being paid through some type of assessment on this property.
Is that something staff can check into also? Make sure, because that was a comment, that was, and I hear the grumbling over there, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, it was followed.
And I'll go on record that.
And I assume grumbling coming from the opposition, not the people that are in favor, so.
Commissioner Johns, when this project first came in, that was something that we looked at, the existing PKID and what properties it impacted. And this entire subject site is not part of that. The frontage of it along Madera Park is not part of that.
So there's not a PKID?
That affects this property, no.
Yeah, sorry. And I'm trying to catch up to the history over here.
But to be clear, we will maintain our own cost, the frontage of the linear aspect of our property.
And maybe this, since we had staff run up here real quick, and then I want to go back to the traffic engineer. The size of this development compared to the other sizes of the developments around it, would you say that, you know, I don't need numbers, I kind of put you on the spot earlier on that one already, but is this a smaller size? Is it comparative size? You know, we keep talking lot sizes, but, you know, looking at the map, I don't know where their boundaries are compared to this boundary, being that it was a, and I'm, sorry, I continue talking, but I ask a question, then I put a statement behind it. That this was a school site, so I'm assuming that this is a lot smaller subdivision, or a lot smaller parcel than the surrounding subdivisions around it. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I wish that I had had an aerial that showed a larger, a larger area, but Madera Park kind of comprises this area. Candlewood is down, down here. So, I mean, just looking at this map, you can see that this, this portion right here is what is Madera Park. I mean, that could fit, you know, multiple times over within this. Same with Candlewood down here. Is that the question?
So this subdivision, or this parcel, is smaller than the subdivisions around it?
Correct.
Okay. And then, yeah, I'd love to hear from the traffic engineer, because that was another big concern that the neighbors have, is, you know, is this going to impact them more than, you know, a school would have? As I would assume that this road was designed for.
And I'll start, just to get on the record. I'm Andrew Smigelinski with Southwest Traffic Engineering, 3838 North Central Avenue. Through the vice chair, Commissioner Johns, schools definitely generate a lot more traffic. And in this case, with only 52 homes, it's significantly, significantly less. I'm working on a school right now that has 1,800 students, and during the peak hour, it's generating close to 900 trips in one hour. It's just tremendous how much more that a school would generate at the site.
This probably would have been an elementary school, so there'd probably have been around 750, 800 students.
And that's still, that's still a very big number. That's still a very big number, because now, even with light busing that occurs, most people drive their own kids to school to pick up and drop off. This is something to keep in mind. The trips that are generated by this site do not even trigger a full-blown traffic impact analysis by the Town of Gilbert's standards.
So the Town of Gilbert did not have you do a traffic impact?
We did a traffic impact statement, where we took, we took a look at the trips that were generated, but a full-blown, like a traffic signal warrant analysis and all these other things that we would normally do for a site that generates more than 100 trips an hour, that's when we would do the additional analysis.
Your time.
Before you sit down, sir, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. So I know that one of the potential applicants essentially for this property was Great Hearts Charter School. I know charter schools typically are, you know, pick up and drop off, no buses. Are you familiar with some of these, the charter school analysis on number of trips per hour?
Through the chair, through the vice chair, Commissioner Banda, yes. I'm actually working on three charter schools right now, and they are, we're trying to, for these charter schools, we're trying to create queues. One I'm working on right now has 1,400 students. We have to provide almost half a mile of onsite queuing for it, based on the current standards. And, I mean, it's just amazing how much pavement we're putting in on these new sites, just to accommodate the queuing from the, from the parents who are dropping off their kids. They are, everybody drives their kid now to school.
Well, I know, I know a lot of these charter schools do not provide buses, and so, and a lot of them are just pickup. From personal experience, my kids go to a charter school. And I know it's, if we're not there 20 minutes early, we're waiting quite a while, so.
Right. I encourage you to show up later, 10 minutes later. You might be surprised.
Yeah, my kids aren't a big fan of that.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
One, one quick question. Adam, do you perceive that they would have an HOA even for a smaller subdivision like this?
Yes, I do. In fact, I have some notes here. This home, this particular home builder, Porchlight Homes, they have subdivisions with HOAs with 48 homes in Gilbert called Higley Point, Reseda and Chandler with 32 homes, Hudson East and Scottsdale with 18 units, and Lazy Day in Phoenix with 24 units. They're actually used to developing smaller infill sites, smaller homes. And I probably should address this previously, I forgot. Whenever you develop a subdivision, you do a reserve study to figure out how much you have to set aside before you turn over to the homeowners. You look at all the ongoing maintenance of that. Streets, landscaping, retention areas, in this case, the underground retention tanks. All those costs get factored into a reserve study. And you have to provide a certain minimum basis of reserves before you turn over. And then you also calculate what that ongoing HOA fee should be for 52 homes or 200 homes, whatever that number is. So this particular home builder has experience developing with small HOAs, and in fact, enjoys solving tough nuts like this.
Adam, Adam, before you, I catch you before you go to sit back down. So this, this home builder is building another development in Gilbert as we speak, correct?
Correct.
Power and Guadalupe?
Correct.
Okay, so what's the, what's the size of that community? How many numbers?
About 76 homes.
So it's larger than this one?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the general feedback from, from surrounding neighbors on that, on that property? Was there, was there a concern about traffic?
I wasn't involved in that case. I don't really know. Shoot, that's one thing I have to grill my client for, not let me participate in that one. But I can tell you on that one, those lots were actually smaller than this one. They're about five feet shallower than what we're proposing here. I think what we found is, there is a certain niche of buyer that likes it. And my experience, while I didn't do Power and Guadalupe, most of the time, in fact, almost all the time, much of this concern after a couple of years doesn't manifest, and these communities find ways to operate and live compatibly.
Yeah. And that's adjacent to some of the schools surrounding the Highland High School, correct?
Yep.
So those are larger, larger lots. Are you familiar with the zoning in that area by any chance? Is it, are they SF?
I'm not as familiar. Because on the east side of the road is actually Mesa jurisdiction.
Right, I know, but to the, to the west, I think is?
To the west are, is?
Are larger properties as well, aren't they?
There are.
Okay.
It's church, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ba, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Engineer's going to speak now. No, I'm just kidding. The question, there were some comments that I heard, and I'm just going to have you up there, and as there's a question that comes up, I'm going to have you answer it, or whoever, okay? As we were hearing testimony, I heard kind of some conflicts and some, you know, there were, there are obviously some common things, and you've done very well to address most of those. There were some conflicts that I heard, and the concern really was, can this HOA with this massive retention requirement and private streets be viable? And I think you've addressed that just recently, with your client, Porchlight Homes, has experienced doing this, and they're, they're fine with it, and they trust that they've got that taken care of. The conflict with that is, hey, there's not enough homes here to be able to do this. You need to have higher density in order to be able to justify the cost of this. And, and that's what we were hearing from you, too. We wanted this to be a higher density, so that we could spread this cost out over more people. And the neighbors can't. That can't be compatible with the neighbors. We get that. And you've been heard loud and clear in that. And 52 homes, they feel like they can accommodate that cost and have it be a reasonable HOA fee and be okay. Is that, is that a fair statement?
It is a fair statement.
I also, as I listen to this, in the engineering world that I live in, you know, we, we deal with drainage and retention things often. And if there's retention coming, if there's drainage coming from different parties, generally there's a fee assessed back to that. And we've heard some testimony tonight that that is not the case here. It was intended to be a regional, kind of a treatment for all drainage, because it was a school. And the developer, Continental Homes, I believe, that that was going to be the case on this property. And so it's just been kind of kicked down the road with every, every additional home or buyer. And that'll be the case with you.
Correct.
You're going to accommodate it. And you feel confident, as the engineer? Could we have the engineer come forward? Would that be okay?
Dave Saltisik, 1102 East Missouri Ave, Phoenix.
Okay. Dave, you've engineered this, according to Adam, and do you have any concerns about being able to accommodate this retention going underground and above ground? And, and how many drywells do you think it's going to take to drain this thing in 36 hours?
Vice Chair, we looked at the numbers, we looked at the off-site areas coming from both the Candlewood subdivision and the Madera Park subdivision, and currently on-site, and feel confident that the area's draining, we can accommodate through our proposed retention. We're essentially taking approximately a third of the required retention and put it underground in tanks. There's approximately 11 drywells existing on the site today that I don't believe are being maintained. With the new development, five of those drywells remain in place, and we're going to need approximately nine more, based on certain assumed standards for percolation rates.
Commissioner Banda?
So, just a quick question. Comparison now, development, when you guys developed this property, to now, what's the percolation rate change? Is there going to be faster drainage? Are we looking at, is it equivalent? I know that there was a comment from one of the homeowners about mosquitoes not being able to walk a certain distance without a full can of rain, and I can sympathize with that. I hate mosquitoes. Is it going to be lingering longer, or is it, or is it going to be better?
It's going to be different and better. Essentially, what we're doing is taking, I think someone made the comment earlier, it's about four acres of drainage or retention area. We're going to consolidate it into about an acre and a half to two acres. I mentioned that we were going to put approximately a third of that underground. So your typical nuisance storm events, your smaller rain events, your half-inch, three-quarters of an inch, are actually all going to be stored underground. So none of that water will be actually sitting in the bottom of the basin. There's going to be plenty of surface openings into those retention tanks underground. So the majority of that water, the smaller storm events, will be actually stored below ground. And then we'll put in adequate drywells. Based on the field conditions, we'll do percolation tests during construction to make sure that they meet the city requirements, town requirements.
So in other words, you're going to have less standing water above ground during drainage time, correct?
During typical rain events, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In the, in the higher events, it's going to be deeper and longer. Well, not longer, but it's going to be deeper.
During the higher design storm events, your 50-year, 24-hour storm event, the high water that we're proposing is the same as it's currently designed.
Okay. Hence the need to take it underground.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineer?
No, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I don't have any further questions, thank you. Are there any other questions, gentlemen? Can we bring it to the dais? Discuss this? I would like to close the public hearing and bring it, bring the comments back up to the dais. Anybody want to start? Or have any comments? Or do you want to just make a motion, and let's go from there? It's up to you. If you have no comments, I'm going to make some, and then we can go for a motion. Is that okay?
I do want to make some comments, first and foremost. So I just want to say thank you so much for everybody who's participated tonight. Neighbors, your thoughts, you know, your arguments, your concerns for your neighborhood is greatly appreciated. We appreciate you coming as citizens, as community. You guys have conducted yourselves very well, right? And we appreciate all the comments tonight. I just wanted to say, as a commissioner, I'm very cognizant in trying to understand where you're coming from and the importance of property rights and where you guys stand on it. So we just want to say thank you for, for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Banda. I have some comments as well. Thank you, neighbors and community members, for coming out and participating tonight. It's been very helpful. There were some things that were brought out that we wouldn't have considered, wouldn't have thought of, and so we appreciate you bringing those to our attention. As I've listened to this, I agree, this, this property was not intended to be a residential community. It was intended to be a school. And it's gone a long time without being a school. And, and, and while the church has been a good neighbor and participated, it's had to have had its cost and its impact on, on their ability to, to administer their mission and what their hope was for their church. And so I, I agree that they should have the opportunity to, to bring this property to sale. If that so chooses, it will have its own impacts. And, and all of those impacts carry forward onto the property and to the, and to the new owner. And so for that reason, they're going to be required to take care of the retention basin and, and the retention capacity there. It is one of the conditions of the approval here tonight. And, and that is written in, in, into this. And so if, if we choose to move forward with it, that's what will happen. There is an opportunity for you to, our responsibility up here is to recommend an approval or a denial to the town council. And it's staff's responsibility to recommend approval or denial to us. And so we're going to take, in my opinion, I think this, this piece of property is probably going to be benefited by this. I understand that it's going to be a, a change and a struggle because it's traditionally been open and available for use and enjoyment of, of the surrounding neighbors. But they don't own it. If you want it to remain this way, then you have the opportunity to buy it from the church and have it remain open and, and bear that cost. That's an option. And, and, but I think the owners, I think the owners have the opportunity to sell it, and, and the new owners have the opportunity to develop and bring, bring their case. And I think they've made a, a very good case here tonight, from my opinion, that would, that would allow this to be, to be proven in my mind that this would be a viable development. So I'm going to, going to opt for the, I'm going to vote yes on, on approval towards the town council. That's the way I'm going to vote. So I just wanted to put it out there, so. Anybody have any further comments or wish to make a, a mo- a motion?
I, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve to town council. Uh, the rezoning of Z 1821. Madera Park. Is that correct? Did I do that right? Enclave at Madera Park.
Second?
Second?
We have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Banda and a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a chance to? I think I'm fine to go ahead and go forward. We're almost done, so. Do we have the chairman want to come back up and take over the meeting? Or did he go home? All right. Could, could I defer you to staff because, because this is a public body and it would need to be on, on the, okay? And, and folks, you have an opportunity to go and attend the town council hearing and, and hear, and, and let your voices be heard there as well. And we would encourage you to do that and wish that to be the case. We're going to continue the meeting. Okay, we have case number 23, Z 18-17. Keith, you're up.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, members of the commission, good evening, again.
We're down to four.
I don't know.
I don't see him out there anymore, so. If, if I were him, I would have left too. I don't, I don't disparage him for it, so.
You want me to proceed or wait for Steve Bryant out there?
Please.
Okay. So we've come before you a couple of times for this project. We've been, done two study sessions, and now here's finally the public hearing. So as you stated, this is a, a text amendment to the LDC for accessory structures. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because I know that you guys have heard this two times. So, so basically, based on our last two study sessions, and we have heard from, from you as a commission, and we have heard that at the last meeting that your suggestion, or you suggested that the current regulation at that time should remain in place, and that a change is not needed as only larger lots would be able to build these types of taller structures closer to property lines, which actually makes up a very small percentage of the lots in the town that actually could have structures of this size. However, it was stated that if a change was to be made, that a height of nine or 10 feet at the five-foot setback line would allow structures to have an eight-foot plate height, which is fairly common for single-story structures, whether, no matter, regardless of the type or the size. And I know we've shown you all these little, all these structures, the different types of structures that could be built in the town, and that are built in the town. Then I have the graphics here that would show how our, our site, our height regulations are administered today. And I even spruced up my graphic a little bit. Kind of showed some different colors here. Kind of showed the solid colors or what the current regulation is, and the dash lines are, are the height of what it would be if we, if you were to revise it to 10 feet. So basically tonight, our, our mo- the, the motion before you tonight is two, you have two options tonight to, to move forward with this project or this, this case, if you will. You can recommend denial to the town council, leaving the standard the way it is today, which is kind of the consensus that we heard at the last meeting. Or if you still wanted to move forward with some kind of change to the council, which has requested that this be brought back before them, you could move forward with changing it to be 10-foot or a 10-foot tall structure at the six, at six-foot setback from the property line. So that, those are the options before you. So I know in your packet, we showed you some language, but basically it would look like this that's on the screen in front of you. You would have a 10-foot tall structure at six feet from the property line. And then for every foot of height, the building would be set back one foot. So that's, that's pretty much what's before you tonight. That would conclude my presentation. And so you guys have a, have some, a decision to make, and, and I will be interested to hear what you, what you have to say and what you decide. And, and if I have any, if I can answer any further questions, I'm available for that.
So my question, Keith, would be what brought about this notion of increasing the height of...
Yes, good question. Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Smith. This was something that was brought, requested of the staff by, by one of our council members. When we went forward to change the location of accessory structures in the rear yard area to allow them to be brought forward on the lot, one of our council members, actually a few of them, actually wanted to take a look at potentially allowing structures closer to the property line, or taller structures closer to the property line. So that's kind of what, that's kind of a little background and, or the history of it.
So that being the case, would it be appropriate to make a motion then?
So...
So last time...
Commissioner Johns has a question.
Yeah, sorry, I don't mean to...
That's okay.
So last time, it was kind of like a design or a study session? So now it's really up for, because it keeps coming back.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Johns. Yes, the last two times we did a study session to, to get you, give you as much information as we possibly could and to help you be able to make a, an informed decision or a decision as to whether or not you thought it, the regulation needed to stay as is or whether or not a change is needed. So now it's time to, we would like to move this forward to the council, whether you recommend the regulation stay exactly the way it is today. You deny the change? Or, or you, you say, hey, we want to change it to X number of feet at the six-foot from the property line, which we have language in this stat, we've given you a suggestion to, to maybe do 10 feet, which would allow for appropriate plate heights and roof heights.
So is that the, my, my iPad died, so I can't look at it. After all this. So the, is there, is there staff support or not support on these kind of items? Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Johns. The, I, I think the consensus that was shared at the last meeting was that, and, and staff alike, we kind of agree that the increased height at five foot, we would, we feel that it would be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties.
Okay, so it does not have staffs. What, the, on items like this, you don't get staff support or not support?
No, it's, it's your prerogative to make your recommendation to the council at this time.
Keith, thank you for your, your presentation. Oh, did you have more to say?
Yeah.
Mr. Johns, please, sorry, I'm sorry.
Wow, tough chair.
I was anxious to say something.
So we can put stipulations on it with an approval? If we wanted to?
Vice, Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Johns. Technically, yes, but, but what you would be doing is you'd be crafting more specifics in the ordinance. They're not really conditions, it's just...
Well, you threw out there that we can make it 10 feet, so that's the reason I thought you opened the door.
Commissioner Johns, that was something that was discussed, yeah, at the last, at the study session. So, well, like, hey, if, if you really want to change it, maybe 10 feet is something that's appropriate based on plate heights and things like that. So we, we don't think, we don't feel that if you're going to move forward with a change that anything less than 10 feet would be really reasonable. It wouldn't, I don't think it would be a useful structure for somebody to build with a plate height at, at six-foot tall.
Tough sheds.
That's right, tough shed. It wouldn't be usable buildings.
So 10 feet would be the maximum then, right? Per, 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 per six feet?
At, at six-foot tall.
Yeah, can you, can you show, and then Keith, just for clarification, there's...
Yeah.
There are certain zones too where this is not allowed on the side of the property, correct?
Well, this is in the...
Is it, is it just in the, in the, in the rear essential location of a property? I know the...
Sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Banda, all of our single-family residential zoning districts, this would, would be applicable to pretty much all of them. All of them today allow structures to be, to encroach into that rear or side yard setback area.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It would be very hard to administer if we only allowed it in certain zoning districts versus others. Yep.
I'm going to ask you one more thing. Do you have that diagram of how you showed compared to the other? Since we, we have some new commissioners with us since, that is up here, since you originally presented this. You had a, you had a wonderful diagram of how other cities municipalities...
In the staff report.
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
Commissioner Johns, was it the table? Is that what you're talking about, or?
It's the table, yeah.
I think I have the table in here.
I was assuming you did, you're always prepared.
It's still there, it's, it, they have Tempe, you have a person.
Remember, my iPad's dead, so.
It's this table though, right?
Yes.
Yeah. The next page shows like Maricopa County, which is the complete opposite end of the spectrum. They, they, they'll allow us a 30-foot tall structure at five feet from the property line, so it's pretty extreme, so.
Which, which in the town of Gilbert, that's, a lot of these properties are the ones that were brought in or annexed from the, the county back in, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, 18 years ago, when we were doing all of that. So that, that tends to be, and, and so because of that, the thoughts that I've had since our last study session was, maybe it does make sense to do that so that we are closer to what Maricopa County was because that's what they, that's what half of those properties have on them currently. And now we're, now we have this different requirements. And so in order to make those kind of look more uniform, I'm thinking that it makes sense to, to take it to the 10 feet at six feet off the property line. That was kind of the thought that I had, the inclination as I read through the staff report this time was, I like the idea of, of giving it, giving that latitude to those larger property owners. Because you appropriately said in there that on the smaller zoning districts, the SF6, 7s, and 8s, the builders almost always take those to 40 and 45% lot coverage anyway, which negates the opportunity to put anything else in there. So typically, it's going to be on a larger lot subdivision anyway.
The question I have though is, would CCNRs, would they, could they potentially overrule this, you know, this, this proposition essentially, I mean?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Banda. CCNRs, these communities could have any CCNR regulation that they would like. They have, some of them have architectural design review boards. They can implement any requirement that they see fit. So yes, they, technically, yes, they could have their own restrictions that their residents have to abide by. So yes, they could. We don't abide by CCNRs and, and for, per, uh, town codes, but yes, they can enact stricter regulations that their residents have to abide by, yes.
And I guess that's what I'm getting at, is I, I can see that if, even if we did permit this, a development could say in their, put in their CCRs that they wouldn't allow it. So we're given that latitude, we're given them that opportunity that it could be there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you, any other questions for staff? Members of the public that would like to comment?
Yeah, look at all those people.
Close the public climate, ready for a motion?
I've moved for approval of Z 18-17.
I'll second it.
Which option?
Oh, that's right, there's...
You want to modify it and take it to 10 feet? There's two options there.
That would be option two, I guess.
Option two, yes.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor of recommending to the town council that we approve this with a, with a 10-foot height at six feet, which is option two of our potential motions, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Opposed? Moving along, thank you all. Moving along, we have administrative items. Administrative items are for the commission and board discussion in action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the commission and board regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on an administrative item should compete a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to address. The commission board may or may not accept the public comment. Item number 20, are there any other administrative items that we need to deal with? What's that?
Item number 24, approval of...
Item number 24, thank you, moving me along. Item number 24, approval of the planning commission minutes. We have two, one from the last regular meeting, one from the special meeting of October 24th. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Smith, second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Johns, second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Communications, report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. I have none, chairman's absent. The commission, none. Report from council is on the current...
Thank you, I'll make it quick. If you didn't know, tomorrow is election day. I know, you're so shocked, right? It means the end of all the signs on our corners and the end of all the phone calls you've been getting and the end of all the mailers, woo-hoo! So please go out and vote, and the text messages, that's new this year. So please go out and vote. Gilbert has one question on the ballot. Please exercise your right to vote. If you have your early ballot, please turn it in at a polling place tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Services Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening commissioners and thank you so much for all your patience and, and listening to our citizens this evening. I know it was, it was a long night, but always well worth it. The only thing I wanted to remind you is next Tuesday is our joint meeting with the town council. It'll be upstairs in room 300. It starts at 5:00 PM and we anticipate it'll be about an hour, the meeting. And thank you.
Thank you. All right. I, oh, I adjourned the meeting. There we go. That was fun.